All right. Good afternoon, everybody. This meeting of the Boynton Beach City Commission is called to order. Today is Tuesday, July 5th, 2022, and the time is now 4:15 PM. Yes, it is earlier than usual, and that's because the City Commission's going to proceed to a closed-door session. City Clerk, please begin the roll call.
Mayor Penzerga.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Turkin.
Present.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. City Attorney, your announcement for the closed-door session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Commission pursuant to Section 286.0118 statutes, attorney-client closed-door session will now commence to discuss the case of City of Boynton Beach, Florida Municipal Corporation as the plaintiff versus JKM BTS Capital LLC, defendant Palm Beach County Circuit Court, case number 50-2020 CA 012780 XXXX MB. The time is now 4:16. The meeting is anticipated to last approximately one to one and a half hours. Attending the meeting are Mayor Ty Penzerga, Vice Mayor Angela Cruz, Commissioner Woodrow Hay, Commissioner Thomas Turkin, Commissioner Amy Kelly, interim city manager Jim Stables, myself, City Attorney Michael Cirillo, special litigation counsel Tom Baird, as well as a court reporter. This time it would be appropriate for us to retire into the executive session, and then we'll return at the conclusion to announce its ending in the public.
All right, thank you. If there's nothing else, this meeting is recessed. Clerk, make sure. Good? IT, could you please restart the broadcast?
Mr. Mayor, the broadcast is restarted. We are now recording.
Thank you. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, it is now 5:44 and a closed-door session that we just conducted has concluded, and the closed-door portion of the meeting has terminated, and we're back in the public.
All right, thank you. We'll take a 10-minute break. If that's all right with the members of the Commission. It is not yet 6 o'clock, and we'll begin at 6:00. All right, thank you.
The broadcast is restarted, and we are currently recording.
Thank you. The recess has ended, and this meeting is called back to order. Again, welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commission meeting. This Commission has just returned from a closed-door session to discuss litigation matters, and now we will proceed with the remainder of the agenda. Let's restart this meeting with a roll call. Miss City Clerk?
Mayor Penzerga.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Turkin.
Present.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. As with all of our meetings, the rules of civility and decorum will be enforced. When discussing an item, commissioners must first be recognized by the chair and not interrupt the speaker. Public comments must be addressed to the Commission as a whole, not to any individual on the dais here or in the audience. Displays of rudeness, insults, or personal attacks are strictly prohibited, and disruptive behaviors from the audience are likewise strictly prohibited. If you violate any of these rules, you will be given a warning, but should it persist, you will be asked to be removed from these chambers, and you will not be readmitted back, so please govern yourselves accordingly. Our invocation for this evening will be led by Pastor Emily Ash of First Presbyterian Church, and immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Angela Cruz. Let's all stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us take a moment in prayer. Holy and all-powerful Creator, we gather here this evening as leaders and citizens of this growing city. We ask you to fill us with patience and understanding to hear the voices of the people. And merciful God, we ask you to give us patience and understanding for the decisions of our elected leaders. We thank you, God, for this beautiful city. We thank you for our first responders and our caring community leaders. May your Spirit hover over this space, protecting us and giving us an opportunity to meet in peace. All this holy one, we lift to you. Please hear our prayers. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Pastor. That was beautiful. Moving on to agenda approval, additions, deletions, and corrections. I'd like to begin by saying that we do have an item on the agenda. Let me pull it up. It is Item 10A. It is an update from HR. To my knowledge, or from what I recollect from our last meeting, this update was supposed to be had after the end of the 30-day period. So if it's all right with my colleagues, let's just have that update next meeting after the 30-day period has passed, so she can give us an update on all applicants, not midway. That's okay with you guys?
Yes, I'm okay. I just have one comment. You know, for the master spreadsheet, Julie, thank you very much for that. It makes it much more simple. I would like, if it's okay with everyone here, to look at geographic location and see if we can add a column for local candidates. Because I think we've discussed that prior. So if we could add that, that'd be great.
All right, thank you. Couple of other items. For new business today, I'd like to discuss virtual meetings. I know we've had some technical issues, and I think it's time for us to address that. I do have three items here for future agenda, so I'll take it one step at a time. The first item that I'd like added is just for staff to research. Research the feasibility of having solar panels on all of our municipal buildings. Just take a look at the economics of that. Is that something that's going to save us money? Because if it is, it's something that we can take a look at more seriously. Number two, from our previous workshop, Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Turkin, there was discussion that borne out of both of you who, on the topic of infrastructure. If this is something you'd like to get a report on, the status of our sewer and roads, is that something you'd like to hear for future agenda?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure we honor that from our previous workshop. Absolutely. Yeah. And my third request is that for a future agenda item is that we have a local rules and procedures for Commission meetings. A lot of our procedures are, sometimes they're in the charter, sometimes they're in ordinances, sometimes it's Robert's Rules, and you know, part of me wishes it was kind of consolidated in one place. That will be helpful for us, but also helpful for all future members of the Commission to have one guidebook, if you will. And that's it for me. Now, let's go with Commissioner Kelly. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Turkin?
Negative.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
No.
And Commissioner Hay?
No.
All right. Hearing nothing else, may the motion to amend the agenda?
So move?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes, the agenda is amended. Thank you. Moving on to informational items by members of the City Commission. Let's begin this time in reverse order. Commissioner Hay?
Yes, I don't have any particular disclosures. However, I would like to let everyone know that the feeding of South Florida has changed from Thursdays to Saturdays, and they're going to, we're going to alternate Saturdays, beginning this particular Saturday. So what I'm saying is there will be feeding South Florida at Isaia Hester Center, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM on this coming Saturday. The following Saturday will be skipped, et cetera. So it will be bimonthly. I guess that's the right term. I would also like to express the enjoyment we had on yesterday, Fourth of July celebration that we had at the Intercoastal Park. There were just so many people, and we had three bands. Everybody seemed to be having a great time. I am very pleased with that in lieu of what's happening throughout the rest of the country. So I want to commend the citizen and Boynton Beach Police Department, as well as the conduct of everyone in the City of Boynton, also our visitors that we had. We, everyone, conduct themselves as ladies and gents, and I truly appreciate that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
All right. I do have a disclosure to make. I spoke to Bonnie Miskel regarding Item 8A. I also want to commend staff and all of our first responders, police officers specifically. I saw a lot of you yesterday at our Fourth of July event, so thank you so much. You're all very much appreciated.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Any informational items or disclosures?
I do not have any. But I want, I do want to piggyback on what Commissioner Hay was saying with feeding South Florida this weekend. On Saturday, my daughter and I are going to do, they're having a family philanthropy day at their, at their building on Gateway Boulevard. I believe it's on Quantum. I believe it's on Quantum. And you can sign up as a family to go and help fill boxes. And so go to their website, check it out. I know we'll be out there. But also, thank you to city staff for the event yesterday. As my fellow commissioner said, it was a great success, and thank you to everyone for coming out.
Thank you, Commissioner Turkin?
I have no disclosures.
All right. As for myself, my disclosures include a conversation with Bonnie Miskel regarding 8A as well. Regarding Items 6C and 8B, which are related, I had conversations with Jeff Burns, Nick Rojo, and Representative Michael Weiner. In terms of informational items, again, I just want to thank staff for the great job that you did for the Fourth of July event. I know it's always a hectic time organizing something that massive, but as we've seen, more and more people are coming out to our Fourth of July every year. That is a testament to the great work that you're doing, so thank you, and I hope that we're going to make it even bigger next year. And I'm excited, looking forward to that. And that concludes informational items. Moving on to announcements, community, and special events and presentations. The very first one, 3A, is just an announcement that the Economic Development Plan Public Input Meeting is on July 18th, 2022. Now, I see a location here. I don't see a location here. Staff, do we have any information on the location? Mr. Durgan, just tell us the time and location of this public input meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. John Durgan, Economic Development Manager. The meeting is going to take place right here in the commission chambers, starting at 5:30 PM, and there'll be a hybrid option as well through GoToWebinar.
All right, excellent. Thank you for that update. Moving on to 3B, Mayor Penzerga to present a certificate of achievement to Danisha Forrest. Did I say that right? Danisha Forrest, who graduated from Smart Horizons Career Online High School Program offered by the Boynton Beach City Library. So I want to thank you, Danisha. So I'd like for you to come and meet me on the side. We'll give you a certificate of achievement. And for those of you that are not aware, this is one of the many great programs that our library is doing. They're also helping people with online high school, so thank you.
I just want to say thank you for offering us this program. For me being a single mom, it was very convenient for me, and you guys opened the door for me to become a medical assistant. So I just want to say thank you, and I did refer someone to this program already. So thank you.
Thanks.
While we're on the topic, is, do we have anybody from the library staff could just share with the public what this program is about?
Hi, Jeannie Taylor, Assistant Library Director. This is a wonderful program. We really make a difference in people's lives. It's for any adults over 19 who don't yet have their high school diploma. This is not a GED program. This is a fully accredited diploma program. And Danisha is our 12th graduate in this program. She's also the fastest student we've ever had. She completed in four months. She was on there every day, working away. We're very, very proud of her.
We are so happy for you and what's going to come next.
So this program's really easy. All you need to do is be an adult and have a library card. I put some brochures in the back for anybody that's interested in the program. We, we currently have nine people in the high school still working, and three people in the prerequisite. So we've graduated 12. We have 12 more in the pipeline. We're ready to just bring on anybody that's interested.
Excellent. Thank you.
Excellent.
We're going to move on to the next item, which is to proclaim the month of July 2022 as Parks and Recreation Month. Casey Young, Recreation and Parks Director, will accept the proclamation. The proclamation reads, and please bear with me, it is a little lengthy. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the City of Boynton Beach, and our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the City of Boynton Beach. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of the city, and parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the City of Boynton Beach recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreational resources. Now therefore, I type in "surga," Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, to hereby proclaim and extend greetings and best wishes to all observing July 2022 as Parks and Recreation Month. All right, Casey, are you here? Excellent. All right, that ends our announcements and special events and presentations. We're going to move on to public audience, but before you do, I just want to remind everybody that these are for items not currently on the agenda. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes per meeting. And again, just if you just walked in recently, comments must be addressed to the Commission as a whole, not to any individual on the dais or in the audience. This is not a Q and A. This is a time for us to hear you out. During this time, we will take notes of what's been said, and we'll respond to them after the meeting. Displays of rudeness, insults, personal attacks, you've heard me say this before, are all strictly prohibited. If you are joining us virtually, please make sure you keep your digital hands raised during the in-person public comments. After the in-person public comments have concluded, that will also be the end of anyone else raising their hands. I will inform the virtual speakers when you have 30 seconds remaining on the clock, just to help you pace, and let's proceed with those in person. So if you would like to speak, public comments, items not on the agenda, now is the time to approach the podiums. We do have both sides available, so you can form a line on either one. Okay? And we'll begin as soon as the first speaker is ready. And don't forget to state your name and address for the record. Sir, would you like to begin?
Why, yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening and greetings. My name is Timothy Fraley, and for the last 10 years, I have been independently contracted by the Boynton Beach CRA to procure and manage the entertainment for the Boynton Beach Haunted Pirate Fest and Mermaid Splash.
I thought you looked familiar.
I thought you looked familiar.
Keep going, keep going.
Since its inception, 10 years ago. And many of you may know me as my themed character, the Lord Governor. I usually come in here dressed to the nines in a very colonial-looking costume. I have been informed by the CRA that the event is in transition and would like to inquire as to the status of the event, if the budget will soon be addressed, and this particular signature event is wildly popular, highly anticipated, and if it will be coming to this wonderful city this Halloween in October. It would be a shame if such a fun family event to be taken over by the city would not come unto fruition. And after so many have labored for so long, including me, in making it one of the best events on the east coast of Florida and one of the largest pirate festivals in the country. How popular is it, you might ask? The City of Boynton Beach has a population, as of the 2022 census, of around 80,000 people. Attendance tracking was done in 2019 for 80,000 people. Attendance last year was even bigger, and I cannot stress enough the economic impact to local businesses, plus the amazing goodwill and prestige gathered during a popular time, Halloween, when families and children of all ages are looking for a themed event in a safe and friendly environment. It has become the signature event indeed for the city and the community. And incidentally, I was hired by the City of Boynton Beach when they had their Medieval Fair and their Pirate Festival back in the early 2000s. And I would be very happy to speak to your events managers to get the ball rolling, and hopefully, my notes. Hopefully, we can all enjoy the Pirate Fest, continuing in the same direction as has made it such a beloved, popular, and huge success. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, because this is a City Commission meeting, I do want to encourage you to come to the CRA meeting, which is next week, Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken. So just...
Because CRA is no longer in charge.
It's also an item that you want to bring up.
Very well.
Thank you.
I shall take you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, let's alternate other side of the room. Begin when you're ready, and please don't forget to state your name and address for the record.
Yes, may I please the Commissioner Mayor? My name is Karen Ho. My address is 1101-1103 North Farah Highway, AO14 Tangelo Drive, 4185 Key Lime, and 100 Via Lugano Circle, condominium 203, Boynton Beach. And I think I have several other properties. Can't remember. My point today is, Commissioners, Mayors, you have the control of purse power. That means you spend the money for us. We give you the money, you spend it. The major point here I tried to make is 100 Via Lugano, condominium circle 203, was fortunately taken away from me. That means the attorneys filed fraudulent D, which is defra. So when I file complaint and with all the document, public document, to the City of Boynton Beach Police Department, and I file a complaint with the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office, it's very hard for people to comprehend the complexity of defra. Now, they keep telling me it's a civil, civil, civil matter. It's true, it may be a civil, civil, civil matter, but I don't have that kind of deep pocket and investigation power as the police power. So in Broward County, they reserve money for 10 more investigators for defra in the court document recording department to investigate. If the people committed defra, meaning produced fraudulent D, filed fraudulent liens, that means they can be prosecuted criminally, rather than having every individual homeowner going after for civil cases. So that's how I understand. I file federal court complaint, but I am not prosecutor. So I can only say, this is my complaint. Please listen to me. Here are my documents. So I hope City of Boynton Beach will take into consideration making funding of it, because this is not right in front of your face, crime, but this is a very complex criminal cases that it happens to us. It's called defra in Florida. And Miami understood it. Broward County understood it. And just Palm Beach County just cannot understand. Thank you. My time is up.
Thank you.
Any questions?
We'll have somebody contact you afterwards.
My phone number is 561-460-1989. So it's 1989.
Okay, thank you.
April 6, 1989.
Thank you. Moving on to the next speaker. Good afternoon. Nice to see you again. Please begin when you're ready.
Good afternoon, Cindy Falcone Carrato. It was nice to see that the parks and rec were getting accolades. I'd sure like to know when we in Forest Park will actually have a park for adults, children, and all ages to come and enjoy the beautiful sunshine here in sunny South Florida, especially here in the city of Boynton Beach. I do have some questions in regards to when we repaint the flag that's on the ground. We've spent 7,200, I think, and another 7,200 to repaint it, and now I believe another 7,200 to paint. When did we decide as a community that we were going to spend our monies painting the flag on the street? I know you can't answer me, it's something to think about. I really would like a question, I mean, an answer, and I really'd like to know how long are we going to continue to waste our tax dollars and the people's monies? I also want to know why we don't have heterosexual month. I really believe it's only fair to include a month to celebrate heterosexuality if we're celebrating a month of transgenderism, LBG, G, K, two, I don't even know all the letters that there are, but I'm just saying. I really would like to see September become a heterosexual month with a celebratory the same way with ribbon cuttings, banners, flags, because I believe that most of the people that live in the city of Boynton Beach are probably heterosexual, and we probably really feel, I can only speak for myself, I love all people, I don't think we should promoting it period in any way, but since it's already being promoted on one end of the scope, I think it's only fair for the other end of the scope. And I, as a heterosexual, am a little bit offended that the inclusive list is not there and that we are basically the outsiders, and that's not right. And I know that you feel, Ty, as a mayor and as a person, that everybody should be included. Well, that's how we include everybody. Either we take it out altogether, or we make a month for heterosexuality. Again, with our funds and the things that are going on in the city, I'm hearing some things that are very disappointing to me. I'm hearing that we're doing things without the vote of the people, or even with we, the people, knowing about it. There's voting on development that's not brought to the table, and I, as a living in this community, paying tax dollars in this community, feel that I have a right to speak into it as well, and everybody in the community also has the right to know what's going on. So I think a little more transparency, and I would also, again, this is between you and I, I'd like to make an appointment with you, Ty, to sit down, and as we had discussed, which has never transpired, but I'm hoping to do so. And for you, Thomas Turkin, my Commissioner, I really put these things before you as well as one of my spokespersons who is in your district, to please work on, let's getting a park for all people, especially the elderly. I know we have a little park across the street for the children, but we don't really have anything for as a community. I love that in the heart of Boynton Beach, they have, what, three parks? They're beautiful, they're wonderful, they bring community. We need one here in Boynton Beach and the city. Thank you very much, and have a beautiful night. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please approach the podium, begin when you're ready.
My name's Danny Farrell. I live at 4414 Roundtable Court, Boynton Beach, 33436. First of all, I would like to say, as a member of the LGBT community, I really appreciate the intersection and what the city does to upkeep it. I think it makes me very proud to be a citizen of Boynton Beach when I walk through the intersection. Next, I would like to address the speeding situation that's going on in West Boynton, especially along Gateway and Lawrence Roads. Recently, I drove from Boynton Beach Boulevard to Hypoluxo along Lawrence Road. And on Lawrence Road, the speed limit is 40 miles per hour from Boynton Beach Boulevard to Gateway. Once you cross Gateway, it goes to 45 miles per hour where there's a park and an elementary school. So I don't know why the speed limit goes up when we go from an area where there's no schools or parks, it increases by five miles per hour where there are schools and parks. I would like to see that addressed. I would like to lower it to 40 miles per hour, personally, myself, along both roads. Also, this year, according to the Boynton Beach Police Department, we've had 1,016 traffic accidents in the city. Total last year were 925. So we've already exceeded in four months the total number of accidents that we had the previous year. So I think this really needs to be addressed. It's a very serious issue. I live in a senior community where we cross Gateway a lot, and it's a very serious issue for us. And that's all I have. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council.
Thank you. Next speaker, please approach the podium. Begin when you're ready.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shannon Thompson, the mother of Stanley Dale Davis III, who was murdered December 26, 2021. I'm here to say a lot of things to you guys. One being that I have thought very patiently, as you guys have said over and over, that you needed to allow the 180 days for the investigation. As you guys know, that 180 days was up, and we still have yet no answers, haven't heard from anyone. So at this moment, I can no longer be patient or passive. I will be very assertive and aggressive. And moving forward, I would also like to say that in doing so, I have had the privilege of hiring two private investigators to overturn some of the things, a lot of the fabricated lies that y'all have said about my child that will be addressed from the agency. One being with the dirt bike going 85 miles, as my report from the investigator and the manufacturer of that motor vehicle, the bike cannot even go that fast, which further is going to show this city as a whole is so corrupt. These agencies are so corrupt, and these fabricated lies that y'all tried to paint the picture in my son, all of this nonsense, the light will be shed. And in doing so, a lot of exposure will be taking place with this city, and to even speak on the disgust and disgrace that this city has tried to offer bribery money to some of Stanley's members for being silenced, trying to stop us from speaking, from trying to stop us from holding you guys accountable. I do say, as the mother, it's very disgusting, and those things too will be exposed. All of these cities, you guys are very corrupt, involved in a lot of, I'm not going to even say, because I'm going to wait for it to be exposed, but what I would also like to add is that at some point, my son does need to receive his flowers. Ty, you're a part of the education, so you know what it takes to be a part of the National Junior Honor Society, which my child was in, which requires a 4.0 GPA. I have yet to hear a proclamation in honor of his day, as this city has honored him three times in a newspaper. Go back and look it up. He's a scholar student. I have yet to hear him honored. Give my son his flowers and his respects. I don't need to hear sorry from no one anymore because I'm tired, but you guys will see the riff of my raff very soon.
Next speaker, please begin when you're ready.
Hello, I'm Mercedes Morris, the cousin of Stanley Dale Davis III. And just to follow up with his mother, Shannon, it has been 191 days, is well over the 180 days that we were waiting for, for any type of answer or any type of accountability and things of that nature. So a few things I wanted to go over, as she stated. Official SJ Day would be nice, you know, a part of your proclamation, since everyone else here gets proclamations, and you know, just every other week, there's another proclamation. So that'd be great for Stanley, an official SJ Day, starting this year, maybe the day he was killed, December 26? That'd be great. Every, you know, 26th of December, that'd be great. Also, a dirt bike park for us. When I say us, I mean us. All of this could have been avoided if the children or anyone else in the community have somewhere to ride their dirt bikes. We have no park, the closest park is in West Palm, Royal Palm, O'Keeley Park. No one's going to travel over there to ride a dirt bike. I see kids, not our type of kids, riding dirt bikes all the time, even before this incident, this murder with SJ, all the time. They're not getting chased. No one's hopping behind them, going 85 miles an hour to catch up with them. Only us. That'd be great as well. He has a nonprofit organization and foundation, the Stanley D. Davis III. Donating would be great. Donating to his nonprofit organization would be great. We have to start somewhere. We haven't got any justice, any answers. Mark is still home, getting paid, and we're still grieving, we're still, you know, sorrowing. Nothing has changed, and it's been over the 180 days. Today is official 191 days, and Mark is still home, getting paid for what he's done. Starting somewhere would be great. Thank you.
Next speaker, please approach the podium. Again, we have two podiums, we can take turns going back and forth.
Wesley Shula, Dareay Beach. Okay, so I want to know, and I need to know an answer today, if the investigation and your charter say 180 days, if that's the case, what do that put that police officer at now? Meaning, are y'all still paying him for sitting home? Or if the investigation is over and in your charter say 180 days, what difference do it make for him? Are he still going to get paid? While the investigation still maybe need some time, or y'all still doing what y'all say y'all maybe be doing? We don't know. We not getting no direct answers. So if this police officer is past that charter, it need to be a ruling and a calling tonight for him to be fired, because it's 180 days. And point blank, the city should not, the tax people should not be paying no more money because that's over. So can I please get an answer with that?
One second, Bishop. For the people who spoke and had questions, I saw that the police chief is right outside. I think he went with Ms. Thompson. So I think he's talking about that process now. So he's available if you want to ask him direct questions. Bishop Wright, please proceed when you're ready.
Good evening, everyone on the dais, everyone in attendance. Bishop Bernard Wright, CEO of Bernard Wright Ministries, President of the Community Review Board. I would like for y'all, first off, to start acknowledging from this day on, that we do have a community review board. I would like to have a meeting with all of you all up there. At some point, I'm going to send you an email in that respect, so y'all can start recognizing, acknowledging what we are requesting and what we are. We bringing our chairs and our table to your old table. I want to say, what is happening with the ARP money? Money should have been distributed to these people coming out of the pandemic. Y'all still holding to the bank, drawing interest. You know, then here's the thing I don't like, you're too selfish. You want to wait till after the meeting to tell us and give us response to any questions that we may ask. That's forcing us to have to stay here when we have other things to do. It is at your convenience that you do this. So this is at our expense. This is not how it goes. This is not what we elect you for, and you now to even file an intent to run with all this blood on your hands since you first ran and was elected as a city commissioner to this city, re-elected and appointed mayor. Look at our city. Look at the condition. So how can you come up to say that you can do anything and will do, or have the capabilities of doing anything that will bring change for the better for the people in this city when there's nothing, no resume that you could bring to show any accomplishments or policy changes to our better in all these years? But yet you filed a notice in your eighties to run. Do you know King's Pass or Scepter? To God be the glory? What's going on besides being in the bed, wanting to have what you get? And that is the recognition that you get, you understand, and all the accolades that you and your wife get when y'all go up to Tallahassee and different places that you go, you've been doing for years. People know this, they call me, that been on that dais and know what's going on in this city.
Bishop Wright?
Yeah.
I'm going to ask you just to direct your comments to us as a whole.
Okay, now, and okay, and another thing. Why is it that you all, after 180 days, now trying to make it seem that the law enables y'all to have an extra 180 days, which make it a whole year? You know, that's not this. You all have jurisdiction, you know, but the investigation had to go somewhere else because it would be a conflict of interest for you all to have that investigation. That's just only legal and lawful. But now the 180 days is up, man, you all don't even have an excuse, because first off, there's enough footage, there's enough evidence for prima facie, but it's meant to be fired, charged, and prosecuted. You have a right to due process of law and equal protection there, as we do, but yet he has to be prosecuted. Why are y'all procrastinating? Man, it's because you all are not in our business. Y'all start the wheel of justice by doing what you're supposed to do. Don't wait no longer, man. And nobody can have no confidence in any of you all up there. And now when it comes to the sheriff department, I want to see the contracts y'all been negotiating with, which I'm going to put into public information. And guess what? You gonna have to recuse yourself, say, going before, y'all gonna have to vote on this because y'all really trying to sneak this in. But you should be putting it as a referendum because it's our city, and we should have a vote on anything of that magnitude, and that's for real. So show us some time that you have our business, by just doing the right thing. Right now, y'all have not done it. You didn't do it when you ran by tapping circle, that's real. I couldn't run as Mike T., Macaroni Thousand, that's my game name. See, I couldn't run like that, see? I had to put Bernard Wright on that. Man, come on, man.
All right, sir, thank you. Any other public speakers, please approach the podium now. This is the last call for in-person public speakers. Please proceed to the podium.
Yeah, hi, Ernest George McNally, 710 Northeast 7th Street, condo 407, Boynton Beach, Florida 33435. That's my legal aim, name, my legal address. It's not the first letters in my middle name. It's not a post office box, which I don't live in. And I know your lawyer finds that interesting and funny, but I gave him a packet which indicated clearly that anyone who falsifies a document to run for mayor in Boynton Beach, it says it right at the bottom where it's notarized and the city seal is put on it. Anyone who knowingly puts false information is guilty of a misdemeanor. Right? Now, if it asked your name and you put Ty Perserga, and your name is Amir Tyrone Perserga, that's one big problem. The second line says address, and you put PO Box 37128. It asks for street and address number, right? And then down at the bottom, it says for the city clerk to put the raised seal of the city that they checked either a driver's license or a passport, and that all the information is correct. Otherwise, it's a fraud, it's a misdemeanor, and it gives the Florida misdemeanor. We have a Broward sheriff who lied on his driver's application for about eight years. He finally got caught. He was convicted of other driving crimes in other states. He put no each year. So now they found out he lied, he had to resign. So I don't know if you get the hint here. You get the hint? I don't understand why this is city attorney, doesn't understand legal documents. You know, when you put the city seal on something and it's fraud, that's serious. And then the clerk, and then the clerk put her notary on it, which is why she's gone, which is why the city manager's gone, which is why the police chief is gone, which this is gone. Everybody's gone, except for y'all. When are you all going? And the other thing is, what you're doing with this SJ case is probably the most disgraceful thing I've ever experienced in my life. Y'all should be not just ashamed, but you should be thrown the heck out of here. And what I find interesting is, whenever anyone talks about facts, why do you look at people like that, Mr. T? You look like so strange. We look at you the same way. You're more strange than we are.
Sir?
So the idea is, whenever we try and express something, you say, oh, you're getting personal. When you're in public office, where you eat, who you eat with, what you do in the bedroom is public record. It's not personal. Look at the news. Hello, it's not personal. Stop with the excuses. And how about last night, somebody yelling gun at the park? Gun, and everybody spreads. You don't talk about that, a terroristic threat, and you arrested a female. Why don't you?
Thank you for your time. Next speaker. Again, this is the last call for in-person public comments, after which we'll proceed to the virtual speakers. Begin when you're ready, sir.
Bryce Graham, Second Vice President, National Action Network, Central Florida, chapter total, some days of 191 days. My math is correct. Six months. We've come back here time and time again, seeking justice for SJ. The things that we see happening in and around the country is a disgrace, and not only happening in and around the country, but happening in Boynton Beach. And when I first came to this podium, I told Boynton Beach that the searchlight was on. And still to this very day, I mean that. I hear all of the talk and all of the protocols and processes, get that. We've been patient. We've been subtle in our approach, almost passive in our approach. We've been subtle in our approach, almost passive in our approach. But if we wait any damn longer to get an answer about the future of this officer, I must tell you, I'm going to show up in a greater capacity and I will not tolerate what has been going on for the last six months. Now, don't take that as a threat. Take that as a promise that I will bust people in and around Florida to Boynton Beach to protest what is going on here. Mr. Mayor, I've sent you an email and all of you commissioners and still have not gotten an answer. Mr. Mayor, you rushed that night to ask me for a number that you could call me and my cell phone still has not rung. When you talk about change and change for the people, you get involved with those who are serious about change. Mr. Man Councillor, I come to tell you, I'm serious about change in Boynton Beach.
Thank you. I believe that is the end of in-person public comments. In-person public comments are now closed. I T, could you tell us how many people have their digital hands raised waiting to speak?
Mr. Mayor, we have two hands raised. Our first speaker is Michael Brunson. Michael, you've been unmuted. Please feel free to begin speaking.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Um, I'd like to give a thanks to the people involved with the fireworks display last night. However, however, I have to raise issue with the travesty that occurred afterwards with the departing of the people. It was extremely disorganized, totally unsafe, and in my man, in my mind, unprofessional, the way it was handled. You had people crossing lanes of traffic, even though there was people out there stopping, getting on buses with traffic going by them. You had no signages up. When you asked for directions from certain police officers, it was very hard to get any straight answer. They were changed constantly. It seemed extremely disorganized. And again, it was very unsafe. Now, you may ask, where do I come off saying this? I was a police officer for thirty-seven years and I do not take it lightly complaining about my fellow brothers and sisters. However, the unsafe manner that occurred last night was totally wrong and put totally the town or the city of Boynton Beach in jeopardy of being sued had there been an accident. It was just wrong and they're gonna say that it was because of the train and closing off the train crossings. No, it had already failed long before that occurred. And again, it was a travesty. And I heard a lot of people say because of that, they will never go back again. I thank you for the time to speak. I hope, I hope, I hope there is better control and thought put into this next year. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We're gonna proceed to the second and final virtual speaker. Go ahead and please unmute that individual.
Okay, our second and final speaker is Charday Hunter. You've been unmuted. Feel free to begin speaking.
Okay, can can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed when you're ready.
Okay, yeah, um, Charday, um, she's aunt Shannon's oldest sister. You know, I just feel like it's it's just disgusting how, you know, you guys can even open up a meeting today and not even address, you know, the investigation with S J to even discuss anything else. It's just a slap in the face. You know what we're there for. So I'm glad this investigation, these these private investigations is gonna be taking place because the city of Boynton Beach is 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 corrupt and it needs to be exposed. The bribery money needs to be exposed. And there needs to be an S J day, December twenty-sixth. That needs to be an S J day because the city of Boynton Beach needs a reminder of what happened and what took place that day. Because S J is it's a legacy now. And and when that day comes, they need to also be reminded of what type of person S J was and what type of person that Mark shown officer is. This the comparison is night and day. So there needs to be an S J day. S J also needs a street named after him. And and we're not asking too much. He needs a street named after him. Because the blood of my nephew is laying on that street and the and the blood of my nephew is is resting that commission in a previous commission before. So we're gonna be exposing the corruption in Boynton Beach. And we've hired a full team of private investigator. As I said, I'm here on the West Coast right now, meeting with the team. And so, you know, a lot of a lot of things that have been going on is is gonna be put, you know, brought to the light. And and, you know, I just feel like, why has it taken so long? When you guys want to announce it, uh, new developments with this investigation? You all should just 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 fight, just uh uh quit. That's it.
All right, thank you. And I believe that is it. Can you double check, money?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, public comments are now closed. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to administrative, we have no items under administrative, so we're gonna move on directly to consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, is there anything that any members of the commission would like to pull? If there are none, may have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose say no. The ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent bids and purchases over one hundred thousand dollars. Are there any items that my colleagues would like to pull? I would like to pull item seven C. It reads proposed resolution number R twenty-two dash zero nine five. Uh, this is in regard to the first responder support services. I just want to make sure that we should we highlight this item and the benefits that it can bring for our first responder community. Uh, city manager?
Yes, so this is a first responder, uh, mental health group that, uh, the fire department, uh, initially brought in and now has been expanded to include police as well. This particular thing is focused on the first responder mental health. And, uh, Chief Bruder will be able to give you a little better, uh, explanation. He's been intimately involved in bringing it here from the time he's been here.
Chief, just could you give us an overview of this program?
Uh, yes, sir. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. Uh, so the contract with Command Counseling started a couple of years ago when I first arrived and one of the reasons that I actually came back to the fire service was try to change the face of mental health. I had actually lost a lieutenant in my command to suicide about twenty years ago. And and from that, I began to do a lot of research on exactly how do we handle mental health for first responders? And and what we found was that the mental health community tried to do a really good job. They they're doing the best they can with the resources that they have at hand. The problem is that when we're we're initiating and utilizing the the regular insurance system, they're paying these mental health providers a very small amount of money. And at the same time, the individuals that our first responders are going to see are not trauma-trained therapists. So that can actually be very deleterious to our first responders if they don't go to the right therapist. So one of the things during my research that we found, and at the same time, back a couple of years ago, uh, the local was also very vocal and wanting to help because Boynton Beach lost a lieutenant to suicide. So that between the work that the local was doing and the firefighters were doing before my arrival, and then the work that we did once I arrived, we realized putting a system in place with the right type of therapist is in the best interest of our first responders. So the initial contract was for a much smaller amount of money. We actually allowed our first responders to see the therapist three times per year. But what we have found is three times is not enough. If you have one of our first responders who's suffering from a traumatic event, and a lot of our first responders are also veterans. So if you have a veteran who's a first responder who may also have had a head injury or any physical trauma, that trauma all manifests itself to have extreme psychological disorder symptomology. So this is a state-of-the-art program that we have right now. Very, very few fire departments across the country have made this bold step to bring a professional service in outside of the normal structure, thinking outside of the box to do what we can do to try to help our men and women. This program is also available to the wives and the family members. Command Counseling has done multiple training sessions where they brought in wives. They brought in the daughters, the first responders, and done some some work with the daughters. Um, so it's not just about the actual, uh, work that command is doing with the individual first responders, but it's the overall picture that that command brings to the table and puts us in a very good place where we're able to treat our first responders appropriately.
Chief, thank you for that, and thank you for bringing this item forward. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Commissioner Turkin?
Uh, no, thank you for that, um, presentation. In the private sector, you see, uh, mental health support in a lot of benefits packages. And so I think this is a good step forward. Um, my only, I wouldn't even say a concern, is the utilization. Do we know how often this is used? I think we have one hundred and eleven, um, uh, staff in the fire department. What what's?
Between between police and fire, you're looking at about one hundred and thirty-one people. Now you talk about, I'm I'm not sure the numbers in in police were over two hundred. So but if you look at the two, you're looking at three hundred, three hundred and fifty employees. That's also open to the civilian members of these departments. So, uh, the the ability to be able to treat them with this program is is by far greater than anything that's available right now, especially in the E A P sector.
Right. And so what, um, what's the utilization from our current firefighters for this?
Well, one of the things that when we first brought this program online, one of the things that was very difficult, and we see it more in the police community than in the fire community, but it it's a trust factor. It's 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 a police officer or a firefighter going to a mental health professional that an administrator has set up and realizing that if they come forward with post-traumatic stress, is that fire chief or police chief can remove them off the line? Well, obviously, if there's something severe going on, we we may have to do that, but our goal is to get them help. What we have seen, and that's why this contract before you right now, this item before you doubles the amount of therapy sessions that we can get our people. So the fact that I'm here before you showing you this is telling you that we're exceeding right now the limit under the current contract and Command Counseling was not charging for those extra people. So the point is, is that we're that the numbers of people are growing. And and when we started, as I said in the beginning of the presentation, when we started, yes, it was very sparse. But as trust begins to be built, you see month after month where when these crisis situations come up, now we get Command Counseling involved and we get them the help that they need. So yes, as we move forward month by month, more of our first responders are taking advantage of this program.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome, sir.
Just to, uh, just to understand, this is not, this is inclusive also to city employees, not just police and fire?
Right now, it's for police and fire. If if we did want to expand a similar program to other city employees, that would be something we'd have to to talk about.
City manager, I see you'd like to chime in?
If I can just add, so the the general population will experience maybe five traumas in a lifetime. Uh, emergency services personnel experience five traumas in a shift. So to put that in perspective, having the available counseling is critical to making sure that we don't have somebody that turns to another alternative to deal with their stress level or the stressor. And I wanted to make sure that I highlight that because it's it's hard to put that in perspective. The general population does not have the same stressors and exposure to things that the emergency services personnel do.
Right, I understand that. That's obvious. Um, I just heard you say that, um, I I I heard you say that you said city employees, so I wasn't sure if this is police, fire, and and, uh, it's just police and fire?
If I may, police and fire, but if one of my administrative staff is suffering from some type of post-traumatic event, whether it's something at home, whether it's something that's occurring in their lives, I'm gonna get them that help with with Command Counseling because they work for me. So but in terms of other areas of the city, I think that this this model is something that should definitely be looked at. Um, if I may, just one further point. I I actually was invited to a seminar given by a private insurance firm that was bringing fire chiefs from around Palm Beach County in to discuss how can the insurance companies fix this problem? And they were open to listen to all of us that are first responders, tell them the first thing you need to do is learn the culture. You have to learn what sets us apart from other people. But in the larger picture, uh, I think that this model really could be utilized and carried across in into a much broader spectrum. But but for now, to make sure we we maintain and secure our first responders is critically important.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just, I was a little confused about this. Thank you for clarifying.
Good, thank you. And anything else for my colleagues? Commissioner Hay?
Uh, Chief, I could be wrong, but I look at the police department and the firefighters, uh, both as necessary, but distinct. And what I mean by that is that, uh, for police officers to to come forth would take a little more than a firefighter, in my opinion. Uh, as first responders, was there any statistics that showed one over the other, uh, in terms of why did why you grouped them and why you didn't just keep them separate? Because I I I just feel that the police officers, um, are not going to admit that they have a mental problem. Uh, because the last thing you want to show the public is that we have officers on our force with mental problems, even though it probably real, I understand that. But, uh, how how I I don't see this. Is this program more private than public?
Can you clarify? Can you clarify that question?
In in terms of the first responders, uh, you have, uh, police officers, as I see them, uh, have challenges, uh, when it comes through to, um, certain areas of the city, like District Two. Uh, I know because before I got involved and they didn't know me, uh, I had issues, if you know what I mean, uh, that were unfounded and being stopped by officers and not being treated properly. Okay? Uh, so I I I'm wondering, are these guys on some kind of medication or why am I being treated this way or what's the deal? And now you come and you say that the first responders, police and fire are gonna be together, okay? But I think there's a distinct difference between firemen and police officers when it come to, uh, mental conditions. The firemen don't deal with the public as much, uh, as the police officers. They don't get the reputation that police officers get, okay? And sometimes rightly so. You understand what I'm saying? So I I I'm just wondering, why did we combine the two rather than, uh, have separate programs uh, for those two entities?
Well, we combined the program because we realize and we recognize that police officers are suffering from the same traumatic events that firefighters are. To comment on whether or not they're taking medications, there's, you know, there's HIPAA laws that would prevent even Dr. Guma from Command Counseling allowing that information to get into the public realm because now we would be breaching that officer's HIPAA rights. Uh, but the the bottom line is, is that police officers suffer trauma just as well as firefighters. Now, a a police officer may encounter someone out in the street and have to deal with them at that level, whereas a firefighter has to deal with the the blood and guts ramification of the trauma that they see. So they're they're both seeing that trauma, but at the end of the day, uh, both sets of first responders are in need, desperate need of the ability to have a Command Counseling type of program that it that works, that they trust. Because at the end of the day, if we're there for our people, our people are gonna be healthier, happier. Suicide rates are gonna go down. Uh, addiction rates are gonna go down. Divorce rates go down. In fact, in the police and fire community right now, in the United States, more police officers and firefighters die by their own hand than in the line of duty. So why is that? Why why is it not changing? It's not changing because the system doesn't work. So we have to think outside the box. And this type of program should be available to police officers and firefighters because we both serve the public.
And I agree with you. We should be thinking along those lines, but do we have any, are we the first city in this area to do this? Uh, are there other cities that have this particular program?
Yes, there are.
Do, uh, does any? Does any statistic, uh, statistical data exist, uh, to, to back up what you're saying that I could probably take a look at?
Well, because, because of the nature of HIPAA laws and rules and regulations, uh, none of that stuff can be divulged.
Gotcha.
We, we know through, through invoicing numbers. So in order to keep the anonymity and the trust of our first responders, we know how many people are being treated, we just don't know who, because then we would be breaching that trust. And if we do that, then they're not gonna trust us to provide that mental health for them, and then we're gonna be back in the same situation we were before, of not, of not providing the best that we can provide. So it, it's kind of, I, I look at it this way, our mission statement says that we serve the public, and we serve the public in, in the most fiscally responsible manner that we can, but at the same time, our duty is to the men and women who serve the public. And so my job as a chief is to provide every opportunity that I can, not only for the best equipment, not only for the best of everything for these people, because the job is not easy. And when they take it home, it affects their children and their lives and their children's children. So anything we can do is better than not doing it at all.
All right, thank you so much, Chief. You've answered our questions, is there anything else from the others? Um, before Commissioner Kelly, I just have one quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
I'll keep it short. I just blanked out. Uh, the, I apologize. I'll come back, let's go to Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Chief. Um, I just wanna, um, say thank you for bringing this, um, to the city. Um, I think it's a program that you have seen excel in the fire side, and I would love to see it excel more on the police side. And as, um, as we know, um, police work one on, more on a one-on-one, less than a family base than fire does. I think that that, um, puts police in a, um, a, a different environment where they are more solo, um, and they tend to talk, um, less. So I would like to, um, to see, uh, how you implemented it in fire and how, um, better, um, we can, um, bring it to the police department so that it is being utilized and that it's, it becomes more, um, commonplace, because it really, it really should to, to all first responders, everyone should feel comfortable, um, when they need somebody to talk to, 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 to have that basis, and to be able to make a phone call and have somebody answer right away. So that brings me to my one question that I did have, was that what is the response time? Because I know, you know, in these situations, um, time is of the essence when you're dealing with, um, a mental health issue. So what is the, um, what's the turnaround time for when somebody makes a phone call and they need help? Um, what happens? If you could just enlighten us.
Well, it, it is an excellent question, because it really brings up a very, a larger point that actually, that, that shows you the dysfunctionality of the system that's currently in place, because there are individuals who have gone through EAP type of systems who leave your phone number on the answering machine and a week later will get back to you. Well, if you have a first responder who's suicidal, you can't wait a week, you can't wait five minutes. So contractually, we have in, in the contract that it's a twenty-four hour response, uh, but I can tell you that happens at a much sooner rate. And I can tell you, as the fire chief, if any of my people reach out to Command Counseling and they don't get a response, in probably twelve hours, or probably six hours, depending on the situation, I'm picking up my phone and I'm calling Dr. Guma to make sure. And it's not just for the fire department. I will, I will tell you that when this program first started, I was actually instrumental in helping a few police officers who were having issues, who called me directly, because they heard of my mental health initiatives, and they, they, they thought I was somebody that they could trust from an administrative standpoint, where a lot of these folks don't think they can trust administrators. So to answer your question, twenty-four hours is the max we allow under the contract, but our people are getting help sooner than that.
All right. So the word I was struggling to look for earlier was dispatch.
Yes.
Uh, the true, the first of the first responders, are they included? Uh, what are their services like and so on?
Yeah, they're also included, and anytime that they want to engage in that system, they, they can. Um, and one of the other things that Commissioner Kelly had mentioned earlier, which I think is important to point out, one of the ways in which we get increased utilization is by, which is part of this contract also, is having Dr. Guma come in and do educational seminars, at least twice a year, to where she's opening that up at the police department, in their community room, letting every police officer know, hey, come down here, let's talk about this, let's learn about the things that you need to watch out for, uh, or that you may be experiencing or taking home with you. So, so that is one of the things that we address very carefully within this contract, and we feel that the way to build that trust is, is to educate our people, that's number one.
Any other questions or comments?
Can I just piggyback on that real quick? Sorry, sorry, I just brought up something else. So going to your point about, um, community rooms and having them come and, and having these kind of workshops, what do you do then to the officers or for the officers who aren't comfortable coming to a group setting and talking about what's going on? Um, I, I, I know that has worked for you, and I feel like it can work for the police department with education and with the, um, the trust that has to be built, that you built in the fire department. Um, so what can, what are some options? I guess maybe I'm, I'm asking for you to brainstorm on different ways that you can get this out to, um, the police department without...
Sorry.
No, you're fine. Without, um, without those workshop settings, or in addition to those workshop settings, so that the people who don't feel comfortable in that setting, but hey, they have a question about whatever that topic is in the workshop or whatever, they have that opportunity to reach out.
Well, I'll tell you, actually, Dr. Guma is here. I mean, if you, if you'd like to ask that question to her, she can step up and answer the question. Uh, she may be able to do it in terms of, of where she wants to go or ways in which that I know she can get out. I, I know that we build it through letting them know we're there. And through, it, it starts at the top, Commissioner. It starts at the top where the, where the employees begin to see and build that trust. So through these, through these community meetings, through this education, now it begins to trickle down. And now I get phone calls from the police chief, I get phone calls from the, from the ops chief, I get phone calls from a captain or a major or a sergeant that says, hey, we heard about this, I have someone struggling, can you come and can you, can you work with that individual? So we are making those steps, uh, but I mean, if you wanted to, we could call her up. But other than that, you know, we can continue to think outside the box of other ways that we can, you know, try to be more inclusive, but I, I can tell you, we, we work very diligently, uh, to make sure that everyone in both departments are aware that this service is available for them.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cruz, did you have any questions or comments?
Just, uh, maybe one of each. Um, I think it's important to maintain confidentiality, and as you stated with the HIPAA laws, I think that healthcare is a basic private right, and it's private, we shouldn't really be, um, discussing so many details, um, right now, but you're not, but I'm just saying, um, it's really great that we're providing this program. I did have a question, um, since we're doing it for all first responders, is it a fifty-fifty split in, in regard to funding, or is it just whoever wants to use it will kind of take from that, um, bucket of funding?
Yeah, because we're doing it inter-departamentally, the best way to skin the cat, so to speak, is to, is to do it fifty-fifty from each department. Now, if throughout the year, and, and we monitor, and I in particular monitor my budget extremely closely, and I can tell you that if we begin to see one or the other is having issues or one is less than the other, we can, we can make, you know, modifications. We can reach out to the CM and we can say, look, we, we need to do some balancing here and see what we can do monetarily to do that. We have not experienced that. We've had a fairly even distribution since the beginning, uh, and I think we'll continue to see that as well.
Thank you so much, that's all I have.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right, Commissioner Turkin, you'll be the last one.
Yeah, I do, uh, and I'm just thinking, you know, I'm trying to think about everything. So we, 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 we discussed, and we put on the agenda the potential merger with the Sheriff's Office. What happens if that, if we move forward with that as a city? What happens with this?
Well, if it moves forward with the, um, with the merger, we would just modify, we can modify the contract. The contract's modifiable with thirty days' notice, so if that were the case, we could do that. Now, whatever the case may be, if, if there are still officers that are here and they're still part of the city, then we'll serve them. Uh, but until, until that transpires, uh, we have to plan for the fact as an agency that we want to provide this service, so as long as they're here, we, we still need to move forward and, and solidify this contract and this, this capability for this mental health service for them.
So this contract is amendable after the first year? Or we, we, at any point in time?
It's at any point in time.
Okay.
With notice. So if that were the case.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying.
All right, thank you, everybody. We need to proceed with the rest of the meeting. They have a motion to approve resolution, R twenty-two, dash zero nine five. We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed say no, the ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Chief, for your information. We need to approve the remainder of consent bits and purchases over one hundred thousand. They have a motion to approve the remainder of consent bits and purchases.
So moved.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. We're now moving on to public hearing, where the city commission will conduct public hearing in its dual capacities, the local planning agency and the city commission. Uh, this is the point where I turn to our council to swear in the relevant parties and to discuss the process and introduce the item. Um, Mr. Cirillo?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, this item, eight A, is a request to approve master plan modification, MP.
Mr. Cirillo, one second, I just, we need to remove the item from the table.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, let's, uh, let's have a motion to remove this item from the table.
Oh, moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to remove from the table, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed say no, the ayes have it, the item has been removed from the table, now you may begin, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission. Item eight A is a quasi-judicial matter, it involves two parts, a master plan modification, MP MD twenty-two oh oh one, and a mass, a new major site plan, NWSP twenty-two dash zero zero one, and unless the applicant objects, um, they, they would be heard together. Um, you have in your backup, you have information, which is already part of the record. I will just explain briefly how the hearing will go. At the end of the explanation, I would like to swear on anybody who intends to give testimony at the, on this hearing this evening. Um, the applicant presents its case first, um, including a statement of acceptance or objection of, to proposed conditions of approval that are in the backup. Um, and then the city staff presents its summary of the issues to the city commission, um, and they testify as to their opinions and to make recommendations for conditions of approval. The city commission can ask questions of the applicant and the city at the conclusion of their presentations. Um, and, and once you finish those two parts, you go to the public hearing. Members of the public are invited to speak on the application itself, provide any testimony or facts that they have that may be relevant to your decision of whether these applications satisfy the requirements of the city's code. Once you finish the public hearing, it goes in reverse order. The, uh, city staff can respond to anything that may be appropriate for the city staff to respond to, um, as an outcome of the public hearings. Again, it's another opportunity for the city commission to ask questions of public staff. And then finally, the applicant goes last and gets to, um, respond to everything they've heard since they spoke at the beginning, made their presentation. Once you hear from the applicant, um, at the end there, then it's turned over to the commission for deliberations, and you can ask additional questions if you'd like during those deliberations, and then at the end, you take a vote on the application. Um, unless there's a distinction between your applications, it would be appropriate if you feel you can resolve it on a single vote, to, just to make that vote clear, that motion clear. If not, you can take two separate motions, as the chair's prerogative and how he wants to, to call that. Um, so at this time, what I'd like to do is for item eight A, if you intend to speak or give testimony on this item this evening, please raise your right hand and I'll swear you in. Um, do you swear from a statements or testimony you gave this evening, should be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and Mr. Chair, I mean, Mr. Mayor, at this point, it would be appropriate to have the applicant, uh, present.
Absolutely, so if you are the applicant, please approach the podium. Again, we have both podiums available. We will begin with the presentation, first with the applicant, followed by staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, this is Bonnie Miskel, are you able to hear me?
Yes, Ms. Miskel.
Oh, thank you, and good evening to the rest of the commission and staff. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, uh, virtually this evening. Um, so it's been several months since we've been to P and D, um, the Planning and Development Board, so, um, we, we'll try to speak about the generalities of our project and then talk about some of the revisions that have been made since that meeting. Um, I have been sworn, sworn by the way, and our team is in the audience, and we also have our traffic engineer, uh, present virtually in the event you have any questions about traffic. If you'll go to the next slide, please. So this property that we are referring to as Shalamar is located on the southwest corner of West Boynton Beach Boulevard and Canute Road. It is approximately twelve and a half acres, and if you'll look at the slide, I, it, this property happens to be the only property that is south of Boynton Beach Boulevard on the west side of Canute that happens to be in the city presently. The balance of the property around us that is west of Canute is in unincorporated, and I believe is part of the Quail Ridge Golf Course. The course itself is contiguous to us on the west and the south sides, and the fairways run all the way, uh, down to Woolbright. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, it's twelve and a half acres. It had originally been part, when it was originally annexed into the city in nineteen nine, in the nineties, early nineties, um, it, it included the corner piece, which is an existing golf, uh, pardon me, gas station. Uh, that is not part of the application this evening, it had previously been developed. We are only speaking of the twelve and a half acres that is shown on the screen as vacant land. Next, please. When a background, prior approvals on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, um, the property was amended for purposes of land use from LRC to mixed-use low, and there was a corresponding zoning application that was requesting a rezoning from PCD to suburban mixed-use. The graphic on the right side is what is on your maps today. Next, please. This evening, and we certainly don't mind these two items being merged, our presentation reflects that. Um, we have a master plan and site plan, uh, approval for mixed-use residential and commercial development, including two hundred and fifty residential units, two twenty-one hundred and fifty square foot retail buildings, a nine thousand eight hundred and fifty square foot clubhouse, a five hundred and fourteen off-street parking spaces are shown on the plan, a four hundred and sixty-five parking spaces are required pursuant to the special reduction section of your code for off-street parking for sustainability. This proposed project is a high-end lifestyle amenity, um, project with a resort-style pool, hot lot, play areas, dog park, dog walk areas, lakeside walking paths, boardwalks and gardens, and we'll get into that more specifically. Next slide, please. So this is our site plan, um, it is comprised of ten buildings that are two hundred and fifty dwelling units, they range from three to four stories. When this, uh, came through the, uh, complex amendment and zoning process a few years back, um, there were some representatives, and I happened to be at the meeting, there were some representatives from Quail Ridge that were concerned about impacts adjacent to the golf course and some of the single-family, uh, homes to the west of that. At the time, there was a commitment made by the then-owner, which is different than the present owner, um, to, uh, lessen the impacts, um, as it transitions down to the single-family side, and we've done that. The streets, three-story buildings are located along the western portion of the site, uh, with some four-story and three-story south of those, so, or pardon me, east of those. Um, I'll briefly go through some of the elements on the plan here. So to the right side of the screen is Boynton Beach Boulevard, to the south side of the screen is Canute, and that little corner piece is the gas station. And you can see the building layouts, the layout is around the lake. Uh, Boynton Beach is where the retail is oriented, um, just north of the pool area, the clubhouse is the center building, it's a two-story building, uh, mentioned before, ninety-eight hundred and fifty square feet. The buildings that flank the clubhouse on the west and the east sides are one-story, uh, retail, two thousand one hundred and fifty square feet on each of those. The parking along the front, the access, uh, for that parking, and that parking is predominantly for the retail, is off of Boynton Beach Boulevard. Uh, there is another entrance on, off of Canute, which is the principal access, or at least previously was, and we're gonna talk about some changes, but I'm going over what it was. It was principally for the ingress and egress for the residential. At the Planning and Development Board meeting, they- At the Planning and Development Board meeting, there was a significant amount of concern over the fact that there was not residential access, ingress and egress from Boynton into the residential buildings. We've changed that now, and you'll see a couple of arrows over on the east and west sides of the Boynton Beach frontage. There now are gate entry for the residents, both ingress and egress, and those are reflected with the arrows in the little boxes. Improvements have also been made to the pool design to enhance the residential experience. Those were post Planning and Development Board changes based on discussions that ensued from the Planning and Development Board. Another concern actually that occurred between the P and D meeting and this meeting, when staff went back to look at some of the changes that were being made to the Boynton Beach access points, they looked at some of the circulation and flow throughout the, throughout the plan, and they asked us to make some revisions. And so you'll see a little box that says reconfiguration of trash pickup area to ensure no conflicts with the residential traffic. That approach to the trash enclosure was modified to better promote circulation and to provide for fewer conflicts. There were also improvements made to the Canute entry to ensure no conflicts with the gas station traffic. So that modification was made. Today, there is inbound for residential there. There's also, if there is a guest that, a visitor that cannot get in, they have the ability to do a turnaround and exit. There is not an exit there for residents, however. We also incorporated here better egress for waste trucks that are leaving the facility and also fire rescue trucks. So there is an outbound access for that purpose only, but not for residential traffic. To replace the removal of an exit for residential traffic at the Canute entry, there has been a southeastern egress point for residential traffic, and you can see that on the lower right-hand or left-hand corner of this, of the screen. So those are some of the changes that were made as a result of concerns over circulation at that meeting. And as staff revisited that point between meetings, they believed that that needed to be tweaked. Those have been tweaked, and we have worked it out. Next slide, please. So very quickly, and I'll go through this in an effort to expedite your meeting. I know you've been at this for several hours already, but we also have our landscaping representative in the audience if you have specific questions. So our landscape plan reflects that all invasive exotic vegetation will be removed. We have twenty-three trees and palms to be preserved or relocated, which include a slash pine, seven live oaks and fifteen sable palms. Two hundred and seventy-five trees will be installed, including a hundred and forty-nine native trees such as live oak, gumbo limbo, east palatka holly, and green buttonwood. There will be four thousand three hundred and ninety-two native shrubs to be installed, including a mix of red tip cocoa plum, horizontal cocoa plum, Spanish stopper, Simpson stopper, wild coffee, and dwarf faxahatchee, if I said that correctly. No landscaping terms are easy these days. Next slide, please. The open space diagram is reflected here in green. Included within our amenities, as I mentioned before, you can see the resort-style pool that was, is located just south of the clubhouse and connected there. We have tot lot and play areas throughout the site, and you'll see them noted on the screen. Significant amount of green space on this particular site plan. We have not just a dog park, but we also have a dog walk. We have lakeside walking path and boardwalks surrounding the entire project, and we have gardens. We exceed the code requirements for open space, and we meet the requirements for landscaping. There is, to the west of this site, an old right-of-way that predates the rezoning and the comp plan amendment, or furthermore, it predates the nineteen ninety annexation applications as well. It's a remnant. It's not part of this site plan necessarily, but it is also a buffer and will remain between this project and the Quail Ridge Golf Course, and you can see it on the upper portion of the plan. Next, please. So we have several building types here. I'll start with the north and kind of work my way south. This is the frontage, or this is what you'll see from Boynton Beach Boulevard. You can see it in red on the screen. It, with a two-story component, is in the center, and that is the clubhouse, nine thousand eight hundred and fifty square feet. On each side of that, both east and west, we have some open space area between the buildings and twenty-one hundred and fifty square feet of retail. We've incorporated a Floridian-style architecture. As you can see, it's an old Florida style, and we have brought in elements of the two-story building on the one-story buildings having a peaked open space. Our designer is also in the audience, so if you have specific questions with elevations or floor plan, Annette will get up to the podium, or she may want to start walking up to the podium now to be prepared to answer your question. Next slide. As I mentioned, several building types, both three and four-story, and there are different types within those two categories as well. The three stories run along the west side of the project and transition into the four as you get away from residential, single-family. This is building type one, and it's shown on the lower key as those buildings that are highlighted as red, three-story type building, also Floridian in style. And our color palette is shown in the upper right-hand corner of this. If you have questions specifically about the colors or the architectural style, Annette will speak to that. Next type, please. Oh, pardon me. This is our, the typical floor plan for type one. And we can go, we have ones, twos, and three bedrooms throughout this site and included within the different building types as well to provide, you know, to encourage and have a variety of housing for all types of, whether it's families, singles, seniors, et cetera. This project has an assortment that could appeal to any group. Next, please. This is a hybrid type one, which, as you can see, is also a three-story building. Incorporated into this building is a garage component, which you can see on the upper slide, which will offer for some the ability to keep and house their car within an enclosed, fully enclosed space, same color palette, slight differences in the building type, and it is located on the south side. Again, we're transitioning to the taller buildings, but this is a three-story that is contiguous to the three stories that are on the west side of the project. Next slide, please. This is the ground floor plan for that type one hybrid. The bottom portion is the garage area, and what is highlighted in green is the actual residential component. Next slide, please. We go into the building type two, highlighted in red. These are on the east side essentially of the lake area, further away from the single-family. Four-story product. This type also includes some garage opportunities, which are part of the parking options that are available on this site. Same style, Floridian, with the same color palette, and you'll see many of the same elements on all of the buildings to bring consistency to the overall architecture. On the lower key, again, the buildings are highlighted in red that happen to be building type two. Next slide, please. This is the floor plan reflecting the garage spaces and the floor plan for the type two. Next, please. Building type three, which is that portion, the balance of the three-story that are on the west side of the site. This also includes a garage element to it, three-story building, same type architecture, same color palette. Next slide, please. Including the garage layouts, these are the floor plans for the type three buildings. Again, shown in the red key. Next is the type four. These will be the balance of the four-story buildings. This type four is shown in red on the southeast corner of the site. Four-story, including garages, same color palette, same architectural style. The next slide is the floor plan for this particular building. Next slide. It shows the garages, and the living areas are in green. Next, please. This is building type five. It is the southeast corner of the site. It is another three-story product, no garages, same color palette, same architecture. Next slide will be the floor plan for this building. This is the floor plan. As you can tell, these are apartments, these are flats. And then, next slide. So these are some renderings that we wanted to provide you with, to give you a flavor. This is looking from the north to the south, from Boynton Beach Boulevard. You see the Boynton Beach driveways coming in and going out. We have the two-story in the middle, the one-stores on the ends that are for retail. Right now, they don't have retail users that they can provide to you yet, but it will be traditional retail. And then you can see the differences between the three-story and the four-story product. Four-story right behind this retail, three-story on the east side, three-story product on the west side with the lake and the pool in the middle right behind the two-story building. Next slide. This is just a bird's eye view of what the project would look like. Next slide. We only have one condition that we'd like to talk about. All other conditions are acceptable to the applicant. This is engineering condition number one. The current condition reads, at the time of permitting, revise the plans to include the required sidewalk along Newth Road, Canute Road, excuse me, and pedestrian connection to the parking area. The reason that I wanted to point out that there is golf course from the southern limits of this site all the way to Woolbright Road with absolutely no residential buildings running south along Canute. The sidewalk connection to the southern property and running all along that would make no sense because this community would not be using that southern sidewalk, nor would there be any other communities to the south that would be using this sidewalk on this side of the street to go north to Boynton Beach Boulevard. There is a sidewalk across the street on the east side of Canute Road, and there are residential homes that are behind all the, all the way south nearly to Woolbright. So there is a sidewalk provided. There could potentially be pedestrian use of that sidewalk, but there will not be any pedestrian use of a sidewalk here because it doesn't serve anyone. We are agreeable to the connection to going to the north, so we would like to propose the following condition. At the time of permitting, revise the plans to include the required sidewalk connecting the parking area to the existing sidewalk north of the property on Canute Road because there would potentially be pedestrians that would be using that connection going up to Boynton Beach Road, where, by the way, among other things, including retail, there are also bus stops there. So it makes sense to have that connection going north. It makes no sense to have any sidewalk connections going to the south where there will be no pedestrians, and Quail Ridge has no interest in any activity from our development invading onto or near their golf course. Next slide, please. Staff has recommended approval subject to the conditions of Exhibit C, and we've only objected to the one and requested a minor change to that. And then lastly, and I think we're done after this, of course, ready for questions. There were some other discussions at the Planning and Development Board that, you know, wanted some additional changes. One of them happened to be the mail kiosks. We previously had our mail facility within the clubhouse so that if anybody wanted to get their mail, they could do one of two things. They could take their car, drive out of the development, go around to Boynton and somehow do a U-turn to come back in through the front, or they could walk. The board found that to be impractical. They wanted multiple kiosks throughout the site, which was not acceptable to the post office, unfortunately. But we did find a better location so that if someone wanted to drive their car and stop on the way home from work to pick up their mail, that mail area would be on the residential side so that they would not have to drive into the retail. So that is a change that we made based on the comments that we heard at Planning and Development Board, and your city staff has signed off on that. We talked about the additional access point on the southeast, east corner of Canute. We, and I briefly talked a little bit about the resident-only entrance into the development on the east side and that modification. I talked about the modification to our enclosure area, our waste area, and the access, the egress access for the waste trucks and fire rescue if needed. We talked about the reconfigurations of the gate access, which was requested by the Planning and Development Board and discussed at that meeting, and it was encapsulated into this, the revisions that we made. We also lost one other change that we made as a result of that modification. We needed to create some backup spaces to those gates on Boynton Beach Boulevard or off of Boynton Beach Boulevard, I should say internally. So we did lose a handful of parking spaces in order to create some backup spaces. That's been reflected in your staff report, I believe. And one other thing that came up, a comment was made at Planning and Development Board about the lift station. There's, I guess, an existing lift station on Boynton Beach Boulevard, which is unsightly and probably not the best location for it. We have relocated that away from Boynton Beach Boulevard along the west side of the property. Not really requested, but a comment was made that it was undesirable, so we tried to fix that. So those are the revisions that were made. They were done for two purposes and only two purposes. They were either requested by the Planning and Development Board or requested by staff with the revisions that were made for the benefit of the Planning and Development Board. So I think that's it from our perspective. And again, we have a team of people out there. Our architect and our landscaping representative will move up to the podium so that we can answer any specific questions you may have. And Brian Kelly, our traffic engineer, is attending virtually. He can answer and respond to traffic questions as well. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Bonnie, for that presentation. At this time, I'd like to open the floor to questions and comments from my colleagues. Vice Mayor Cruz, I know this is in your district. Did you want to begin?
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Well, first of all, thank you for presenting, and thank you for thinking of Boynton Beach to come and bring a nice development. However, I am a bit concerned about the retail space on Boynton Beach Boulevard. As you know, Boynton Beach Boulevard is a really important road in our city, and I would really love to see if you would consider adding more of a retail space to that frontage. I think it would make a huge difference in that development, and I think it would be really conducive of the intent of a mixed-use development. I know with the history of this site per se, the last commission changed the zoning from commercial to suburban mixed-use, I think it was June of last year? Yeah, June fifteenth of twenty twenty-one. So I really wanted to see if you could consider that, and that was my question.
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond?
Absolutely, Bonnie.
Thank you. We, actually, we had toyed and played around. Thank you. We, we, actually, we had toyed and played around with the layout of the commercial, and of course, parking is always a consideration. Retail generally demands more in the parking. However, our designer is there, and if you could, Commissioner Cruz, if you could just give us a few minutes. I know staff is going to do a presentation. We may be able to play a little bit with our plan because we do, based on the sustainability parking section of the code, we have some parking that is in excess of what we need. So if you'll let us work on that, let us see if we can sketch something up. I know that's unusual, but we'd like to accommodate you if you can, if you could give us a few minutes and we could get back to you on that point.
Yeah, sure. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, we will do.
Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Otherwise, we'll proceed to the staff presentation and we'll have another opportunity to ask questions. Staff? Let me write.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner Amanda Radigan, Planning and Zoting Director. The information within the city's staff presentation is redundant from what was just presented, so I am available for any questions if there are. I would also suggest, there is an, in the comment that was just made regarding parking, there is an excess of parking based on a reduction that the applicant is requesting. However, any changes to the site plan would, we would like to be able to review the site plan in a more conducive setting. So if, if additional commercial space is, is requested, we're happy to work with the applicants to maximize commercial space based on the restrictions that parking allow.
I've just been texted, Mr. Mayor, if, if staff is over with their presentation. I think Annette may have something that she'd like to show you, if you'd like to look at that before you close.
Sure. Are you Annette?
Yes.
Okay.
Annette, for the pleasure. Here have a site plan, or it's a clubhouse. And what we're thinking, based on our layout, without destroying the clubhouse and keeping amenities for our residents, we could take the mailroom, the package room, which is approximately about 500, 600 square feet, and we could apply that to retail. That would be something that we could do. And we could also take a portion of the second level, and that will be a probably 2,000 square feet, more or less, so let's say roughly about 3,000 square feet of retail. More or less, I, I don't have exact numbers for you, but we could run it. But based on the square footages that I have, we could do that for you, and I kind of marked it up here in red. Yeah, so it's kind of the red area that we're thinking, and that will allow us to keep the gym, keep the other amenities within that building. Annette Nolasco from MSA Architecture.
I just, I just put the date on it so we would know this was handed to the commissioner. The staff will have to look at it too, but I'm gonna pass it around to the commission. It'll be part of the record.
So, so Mr. Mayor, and I've been, I'm seeing this for the first time as well. I am, so that essentially is approximately 2,700 square feet. So we're going from 4,300 to 6,700, if I have that correct, which is not quite double, but we're pretty darn close to that. And the only thing that I'd ask, because I think we, we, we kind of came in with our P and D meeting at a bad time. The DAIS had just turned over as far as board members, and I know Commissioner Kelly came in after that. And so this meeting has been delayed, unfortunately, for months. So it's even hard, a little hard for me to remember everything that happened at P and D. So if, in fact, you're inclined to accept the proposal that Annette's just made, you know, if you could approve it, subject to staff evaluating it for consistency with the code, we're pretty comfortable, based on what I'm reading from what they've texted me, that we will continue to meet code, and we would essentially be creating more of a unified frontage of retail by doing what we just proposed with the amenities in the clubhouse really being oriented to the southern part of the site, which is the residential. That would be our only request that we could, and if it, obviously, if staff comes back and says this doesn't meet code, then we're gonna have to come back to you. But if we could avoid having to wait to come back and get rescheduled to hear, present to you again, we would obviously like to avoid that.
Amanda, please proceed.
Thank you. Without looking at the site plan, I would just note that repurposing areas of the clubhouse might not be the most ideal way. I think the intent of the SMU is to create more of a frontage on Boynton Beach Boulevard. And alternatively, I would suggest that the existing retail spaces are expanded. One of the things we've learned through working with developers that different types of retail spaces require different space sizes. And sometimes these smaller units really limit the type of retail that we can, that it can be leased out to. So I would say having two larger areas might be more conducive to different types of retail versus three micro or three smaller spaces. It would also allow for a more continuous frontage on Boynton Beach Boulevard. And there is some space to expand. Again, this is site planning at the DAIS, so not ideal, but there is some space to expand. There are two pretty large outdoor seating areas listed on the site plan. So there is some room to kind of expand those areas and make them into inhabitable space, habitable space instead of outdoor space. So there are options. I am comfortable working with the design team on these options if there is clear direction on what the commission would like to see.
And we, by the way, we are certainly comfortable with that. You know, Amanda's team is excellent, and she suggests viable other options. We were trying to do this on the fly, and I'm sure we can come up with something that they'll find from a design perspective is more attractive. But we will certainly commit that it will be at least the square footage that I just referenced this evening.
Yep. Because I'm not a, an expert in the site plan stuff, just wanted to confirm that this picture means that this is the front of the building, correct?
We're looking at plan, so the two smaller are the retail roofs, and then the middle one is the clubhouse with the two stories.
So the thing I'm gonna just ignore.
Correct. Okay.
Yes. So this means that we will provide a complete retail frontage on Boynton Beach Boulevard.
But that's on level two. So on the front, on the first level, you'll have more of a lobby feel, and then we'll have a smaller retail towards the right-hand side, which is our mail and package room at the moment. And then you have the separate buildings on the either end, which are full retail. And that's just me trying to find, you know, square footages to add to retail. A quick way of doing it.
Counsel?
Just Vice Mayor, just for the record, since, you know, not everybody can see, I'm just, you're indicating on the 7522 handout. You don't, that's fine. I just want to make sure the record, when they, when you're, when you're asking questions about it, that's what you're referencing to.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues here for staff or the applicant, Commissioner Kelly? Let, let's begin with Commissioner Kelly, then we'll go to Commissioner Turkin next.
Thank you for presenting. I, I like most of it. I agree with Vice Mayor Cruz that there needs to be some, a little bit more commercial element and, and maybe a little bit more variety because two exact plats of space may work for some businesses, but maybe a business that's like, this would be a great spot for me, doesn't need that kind of square footage, so I don't know. Maybe they get expanded a little bit and then split up, or one gets split in half so that there's three business opportunities. But I think there's, I think that to, you know, we, we have to make the most of, of that space and, and and to, the clubhouse will be a great visual for Boynton Beach Boulevard, but I think we also need to, to think about businesses and business opportunity in that area. So I agree with Vice Mayor that we need to revisit that and to see how we can incorporate a little bit more commercial use in that. My second question or comment on this is I, I am struggling with traffic. I, Boynton Beach Boulevard is our main thoroughfare from the Turnpike to I-95. And I, I am struggling to believe that residents in this development will not want to go west on Boynton Beach Boulevard to go to the Turnpike. And to imagine that that many more cars will be making a U-turn, which is, is the only way to go west at this point where this development is, is going to go. I, I am hesitant to, I, I'm hesitant about that because the traffic is already difficult in that area. Businesses are coming in. We want to encourage businesses and residents to come and stay. And if there are traffic issues, that will be the one major deterrent. So I'm wondering on staff end, what, I didn't, I know there was a whole paragraph about traffic, but it, it really was just met, we met, met the requirements, they did this, they did that. What is the city's position as far as this traffic? Because I foresee that U-turns there are going to be a problem.
Thank you, Commissioner, for that question. I'm actually gonna have our city engineer respond to that.
Hello, Gary Dunmire, City Engineer. When it comes to traffic and if they wanted to head west, I always thought the alternative for them would be head south down Newth and then be able to go, take Woolbright west. And so there, there is a way to go west without having to go east on Boynton Beach Boulevard first.
But the Turnpike is on Boynton Beach Boulevard. So to think that somebody's gonna go all the way to Woolbright, to then come all the way back around to get on the Turnpike, I, I struggle to think that that's what the residents will do, but I, I mean, that's.
Well, I, I think as residents, you know, you have to learn to adapt to what's the easiest thing to do. And so I think you'll attempt a maneuver. After you attempt it, and you realize that that's probably not the best way to go, you'll try to find another way. And, and, you know, this, this happens to me here at the city quite a bit. And it's, it does, it's a trial and error thing, and, and it's, you can't teach the residents to do this. They have to find out how to adapt to traffic patterns. And I believe, you know, my, my thought is that they always tend to find the way that works easiest and there's the least amount of risk.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Bonnie.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Brian Kelly, our traffic engineer, is also on the line, and Palm Beach County required us to study that, so he may be able to share some information to respond to Commissioner Kelly's question.
All right, Mr. Kelly, if you'd like to chime in on this issue?
Yes, this is Brian Kelly. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank, yes, Brian Kelly, a professional traffic.
Have you been sworn? You're for and right, Mr. Kelly?
Yes, I, I have been sworn in.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, yes. So, and, and there's gonna be a combination. There will be some people that head south on Canuth. That's certainly the case. But there also will be people that exit onto Boynton Beach Boulevard and then make a U-turn at Canuth or to the intersection to the east. And we prepared a traffic study. We actually took counts out there. This has been fully evaluated. We did an analysis for both Boynton Beach Boulevard and Canuth Road and the intersections, and both Palm Beach County and FDOT fully vetted and reviewed those U-turns in the analysis and the capacity for all of those facilities.
Is, is there a, there's a grade to that traffic report, correct?
So, yeah, so.
What was that grade?
Is evaluated. There is like an A, B, C, or D. In, in Palm Beach County, it's really just level of service D or better, essentially, for capacity, and that's what ours is. But I can tell you from the segment.
Is it, what is it, A, B, C, D?
We're, we're, we're at a D, which is a, which is kind of the standard passing concurrency level. But to kind of give you an idea from a capacity standpoint, we're only running at about 70% of capacity adjacent to us on Boynton Beach Boulevard. So there is sufficient capacity for our site.
That's my concern too, is the traffic. There's a couple other things I do want to point out. I do appreciate the removal of the invasive species with the vegetation in the presentation and putting in native species. I do like the dog park. I like the green space from what I'm seeing here. One question I do have, and this is, this might be silly, but I'm just looking at the site location, and I see all this green space, and it backs up to the Quail Ridge Golf Course. Whose responsibility is it? Is it the city's? Is it the, is it the, is it the applicant or the current landowner to ensure there's no endangered species on the land such as burrowing owls or gopher tortoises? Who, who, who takes on that responsibility?
Well, I'm not sure if you're referring to the, the area that is owned by Quail Ridge. Obviously, we can't touch their property. But typically, the owners that are commencing development are responsible and required. If there are endangered species, they would have to manage that through an environmental plan. I don't believe that we are aware of any, and our client, prior to purchasing the property, did their due diligence and had, I think they did at least one environmental exam of the site. Of course, that was a while ago.
How long ago was this done?
Either Renee or Matt, could you get up and speak to, I think, I know you did at least a phase one. If you could speak to whether you did any other environmental analyses?
Good evening. My name's Renee Gutierrez from TM Presidential Applicant. We did both a phase one and a species, and both of them came out negative.
Okay. And when was this done?
I would say mid-last year. We could provide you the, the report if you'd like.
Okay.
As an email.
I just want to make sure, because I'm looking at all this green space, and there's a lot of birds over there. And the golf course.
No species whatsoever.
So if there is birds on, so what, what if there's endangered, an endangered species on the golf course, right? That's not, you know, that's not your concern, but the impact of construction backing up to that, is there a setback? What, what does that look like?
So, so if you look at the, the site plan, you, you will see that there's, there's about 90 feet before you get to the actual footprint of the first building pad. So that is kind of the area where we try to step back, we try to stay away. Anything that might be on the other side of that golf course, we try to, you know, keep ourselves away, right? With the silt fence, you know, just keep the distance as much as we can.
Yeah. I don't think 90 feet is that much. But my, my, my main concern was any endangered species there, and so I would like to look at that report.
Sure. Look at the, if that's okay. Planning, and I can provide you a copy of that. Sure.
And I do agree with Commissioner Kelly and Vice Mayor Cruz as far as the retail space goes. You know, we're looking at the clubhouse, and it's almost fourfold compared to the retail space that we have there.
All right, is there anything else? Commissioner Hay, did you have a question or comment?
Yes, I, I just wanted you, I was looking at the your plan here, and I, I, the egress and, and ingress, I, I don't, I don't see enough of, where are, the, off of Boynton Beach Boulevard is, is the only ingress and egress?
So if you see for, you have the, the Boynton Beach, correct? And then you come around Newth Road, and then you see the entrance for the residential community.
Right next to the garage.
So just those two?
And then we have an exit only.
Yeah.
Towards the left on Canuth.
Where about?
Keep going on Canuth all the way towards the left corner in the site plan.
If you see the arrow, you see, if you look at the screen and you see the arrow on the left, on the left rear, you'll see the, the, the other end exit.
Exit only.
Okay, and I, I guess the, our, our city trucks can make that turn. Part of the problem a lot of times is just picking up the, the guy. Part of the problem a lot of times is just picking up the, the garbage and, and making an exit out of there.
All those turns have been.
Out of county?
Have been satisfied, all the radius turns, so that the fire truck and, and the garbage truck can make those turns through all those, all those radiuses.
Okay, so.
Engineering wise, it has been proven that, that the fire truck and the garbage truck can make around all those turns, all those corners.
Okay, so P and D recommended approval, right?
Yes.
The staff has.
What was that?
Yes, Commissioner, the engineering department and planning has reviewed the auto turn radiuses and has confirmed that our trucks, both for trash and fire, can make the existing radiuses as shown.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, so we will have more opportunities to ask questions and dig in deeper. But I'd like to get the process moving forward. So at this point, I'd like to open the floor for public comments, beginning first with those in person, then we'll proceed with those online. If you'd like to speak on this item, approach the podium now and begin when you're ready, Ms. Sawyer. One second. Is it on?
Oh, there we go. Susan Sawyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. I think I'm the only one in the room who's been to all the P and D meetings and these on this project. And this is not what was originally brought forward, FYI, which was a lot of discussion during the P and D meeting. I will say Bonnie has done an amazing job improving this to where it is versus all the debate and discussion that came up during the P and D meeting, which, you know, I'm always the first one to jump up on this. Before I get into this, I should point out that it's Canute Road. Mayor number three was Mr. Canute. We should all at least make the wild attempt to say the name correctly. Thank you, Bonnie, for getting it correct. So let's see, number two on my list is the buffer zone. I'm glad, Bonnie, that you're keeping the buffer zone, if nothing else than to have to listen to me complain about it. Hopefully, that is enough space because there has been, the neighbors who live over in the condos across the street and down on Woolbright have said they've seen endangered animals and they have seen quite a variety of wildlife and they do need someplace to go. And we know that picking them up and moving them to another location is never the best choice. So hopefully, the buffer zone's enough. I do agree with Commissioner Turk in that we need to look at more green space though because possibly that's not enough. Question or comment number four is the trees. As always, I'm going to stand up and complain that you don't have enough canopy trees. You really need to have more Florida slash pines and less sable palms. Sable palms provide little to no shade and the slash pines, while they don't provide extensive shade, will provide a wonderful place for all of our raptor birds. And we need to stop and remember that we have nesting bald eagles in our city. And on two locations just outside of our city limits, we have hawks, falcons, everything. So we really need to be planning for them. And one, Florida slash pine's not enough. I would highly suggest you get rid of those 23 sable palms and switch to Florida slash pines. Next up is the roof colors. They need to be white, not this gray color that will absorb heat and make an urban heat island. We need more car chargers. Bonnie's right, we don't need sidewalks to the south. The Vice Mayor and Commissioner Kelly are correct, we need extensively more retail. We do not need a clubhouse that's out of control in size. And let's see, there was one more thing I think I had in here. And the park areas that Amanda brought up, I, I don't think we should be taking away green space or usable space that makes this more beautiful. I think we should, you know, take the retail from the clubhouse, which is out of control big. So I think what you guys are talking about is great, but I do think you need to have this up so that everybody can see it on the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other in-person pub, yes? Please approach the podium and begin when you're ready.
All right. Danny Farrell, 4414 Roundtable Court in Boynton Beach. I just wanted to make a comment, I guess. I heard about, in, in this presentation about it's going to be a nice place for singles, seniors. When I, I haven't heard anything about pricing on these units. That would be the one thing that very concerns me. From the sounds of it, it doesn't sound like it's going to be a very cheap place to live. So I really don't know how a senior or a single, a, a single mother who may work at the Aldi's next to the, where this is being built, is going to be able to afford to live there. I think we need more affordable housing, not less affordable housing. And that's what this is doing. This is just adding more housing that's out of price for our city. So I think that should be really addressed with this, that the price of the units need to be for affordable housing for people that really need it, not for the people who live or, or, excuse me, the people who work 30 minutes from here. It needs to be housing for people who live in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Now is the, this is the last call. Please approach the podium.
Yeah, hi, Ernest McDonald, 710 Northeast, 7th Street, Boynton Beach, condo 407. So I, I kind of agree with a lot of the comments I've heard here in, in terms of how, how projects like this are always presented and, and, and yet they add to the ongoing problem in the city becoming high density for millionaires and billionaires. And most people who live in the city can't live here anymore. So these kind of projects puts them out. So the other thing I want to say is I took some time because I noticed that before a project like this gets approved, it always goes before all the other boards and all the other committees and, you know, everybody votes on it. And then it goes through a long process and finally it comes here and it gets approved. So what I thought, I should take some projects and then I should Oprah and get some political contributions and then cross-reference them with the developers. And isn't it amazing that when you look at the projects that come before this mayor and commission, the final say on these projects, it's loaded with the developers' contributions to the people sitting on this podium? And if you don't believe me, I'll show you thousands and thousands.
Sir, speak into the mic. You're speaking to us.
What?
You're speaking to us, so please speak into the mic.
I'm not speaking to you because you're not even the mayor. Have a nice night.
All right, any other in-person public speakers? Seeing none, we're going to move on to those online. Mani or whoever's in IT back there, please let us know how many are online with their hands up.
Mr. Mayor, we have two hands up. Our first speaker is Ramona Young. Ramona, you've been unmuted, but you are self-muted. Please click the microphone next to your name to unmute yourself.
Ms. Young, please begin when you're ready. And I'll let you know when you have 30, just begin when you're ready.
Ramona, please click the microphone next to your name to unmute yourself.
Mani, how about we come back to Ms. Young? Let's go to the next speaker and hopefully by then, Ms. Young will have figured out whenever it needs to be done. Who's the next speaker?
Our next speaker is Christy Ward. Christy, you've been unmuted, but you're self-muted. Thank you. Begin, feel free to begin speaking.
Yes, good evening. My name is Christy Ward. I'm a Boynton Beach resident. I was just, I have a few questions. I wasn't able to see all the slides, but I hear a lot of information that's going forth and it sounds like a really good project. However, I still have questions. My concerns are with the traffic. My concerns are also with the housing, the affordability of them. There are many projects that are coming forth and while they all may seem nice, I would just like to know, to what aspect is the Boynton residents going to be able to live in these places? Because there's a lot of Boynton residents that do not even work in the city of Boynton Beach, nor do they live here, that they're having issues staying in Boynton Beach. So the affordability is a questionable thing and, you know, that's one thing that we're really having an issue with. I, I just think like this is not something that we, we need to push off very quickly, that it, we need to count the cost, we need to figure out what it is exactly that needs to be more helpful and more affordable for the city residents. Because I, I, it's, we have a beautiful city, but it's a lot that's coming in and a lot that's coming down the pipe that, that could be beneficial for other people. And I don't think any, everyone else has, has this constituents in mind. So I'm just saying with the affordability of these places and we really need to count the cost. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you. Ms. Young, if you can hear us, are you available to speak now?
Unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, I see that Ramona Young is currently offline, so.
All right.
I need to return to her.
All right, well, we have to proceed with the rest of the meeting. If she has not come back, then public comments are now closed. We're going to move on first with staff. If staff would like to approach the podium, if there's anything you'd like to respond to, to any of the items you've heard or anything that the commission has asked about. And then afterwards, we will go back to the applicant for any final comments. I'm sorry, try again.
Yes, Mayor, I believe that the comments that staff has already presented have covered the questions. The, the remainder of the questions, I feel, is more suitable for the applicant, especially the, the pricing and housing affordability.
Okay. Before we proceed, are there any questions from my colleagues here specifically for staff while she's there?
While you're here, Commissioner Kelly, and I, I hate to bring things up right now. I know we've had time to review this, but as you're, as you mentioned, the traffic, both of you, it really makes me think about the possibility of, yes, making those U-turns. It is 250 units and, you know, I don't know if there's anything that could be done at all, whether it's from our side or, or from the client personally. Sorry, a little sorry. To try to, to try to mitigate those issues because I see where you're coming from. I know that having, you know, another 250 apartments that are going to be nice apartments, it's going to bring more people to Boynton Beach and, and the retail and all that, it's great. But at the same time, I'm slightly, now that she brought that to my attention, also somewhat concerned with that. So is there anything that could be done to improve those conditions? I know we just spoke to the engineer and he just basically said that we should take a different route. I don't know if that's really, just, I just wanted to.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. We do have the applicant's traffic engineer here too. I just wanted to put some of the numbers on, on the record. I'm not a traffic engineer, but the way that these are usually calculated are based on number of units and square footage of commercial space. Existing, this project is expected to generate 1,528 net daily trips, which amounts to 92 net AM trips, which means 92 more trips in the morning peak time, and 124 net PM trips. Most of the time, these are mitigated through design solutions, being that there is opportunities for alternate routes and U-turns. I'm not sure if the traffic engineers have other solutions that they would like to present, but staff has found them sufficient and they are meeting concurrency and the roads do have available capacity on them.
I have, I have one request. For when we do the staff report, can we put the grade of the traffic report from the county into that? Because I feel like we used to do that. I'm not sure, maybe it's always been left out because I think that is important.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Go ahead, Commissioner Kelly.
I just have one more follow-up as far as traffic goes. And do we know, because this is a, it's an FDOT road, do we know, has this road, or when's the last time this road was looked at by FDOT for maybe a traffic light in that area? Like what, when Aldi came in? I feel like that area is now getting a lot more traffic, a lot more built up. And I'm just wondering, where, where's FDOT in reviewing that road for any upgrades or updates with, with regard to that?
Honestly, Commissioner, Gary Dunmire, City Engineer, I haven't asked that question and I, I don't recall when Aldi was submitted, what happened? So I can look into that and get that answer for you.
Thank you.
I, I would add that as development does come in, each project is required to get approval from FDOT and they are monitoring capacity of the roads with each new development. So it is being monitored. I don't know when they did a last all-inclusive update to it. I do remember vaguely when Aldi came up, there was a request for a traffic light from staff. And I believe FDOT said it was not warranted based on the traffic trips that were being generated at the time.
Okay, well, so now with a potential new apartment building and retail space, what would city staff have to do to request FDOT to review that again now that we're increasing, you know, population in that area?
We can absolutely request it. I, I would ask the applicant to see if that has been done. It usually is done as part of the analysis when they approve the projects.
Applicant, would you like to address any of the items that have been brought forward?
Just reference the, my traffic engineer, Brian, I, I believe that that was not an issue when you went before FDOT, correct?
Yeah, we, we discussed with the, the traffic signal at Canute and it was determined that it was not warranted. It wasn't warranted in the past and it would be warranted by now. And, and once again, the DOT and county both made thorough review of our traffic study, which included a traffic of those U-turn maneuvers. And it showed it met all applicable legal level of service and capacity requirements. And in addition to that, when we actually submit for a permit, the DOT will ask us to even look at it again to see, for example, if we had to extend a turn lane to add even a little bit more capacity. That's actually another stipulation the DOT looks at a second time when we actually submit our driveway permit. So there is some kind of belt and suspenders on this from a, from a capacity and approbability standpoint.
I'm ready to respond to some of the other questions that the public made as well, when you're ready.
Miss, Mr., please.
Okay, fine. I'll start with pricings. As I mentioned there, this is comprised of ones, twos, and threes, and the range is anywhere from 1,800 to 2,900. The, the speakers who spoke about affordable housing, that, you know, overall, you know, all of Florida, particularly South Florida, is challenged by affordable housing. However, we're challenged by housing, period, because it isn't just for the workforce or below or above. We have a housing shortage, period. And so this brings housing into the city to stir and spur growth. And it's housing that is needed. And I'm not here to tell you that workforce and affordable isn't as important or more important, because it is. But where the city does not have a limitation that this has to be affordable housing, as a matter of fact, this, we're asking, what we're asking for is permitted by right. And we're simply trying to give you the best project that we can give you. And we've given you a product that is allowed and again, permitted by right. We are happy to work with staff to expand along the frontage. You know, Amanda made some very good points that we can probably create a variety of spaces, some larger than presented there by using some of the space on each side. Or we can work within the frontage that we have. But in any event, we'll work with them. We, we know that we cannot exceed 2,400 square feet because we have gone to DOT previously and, and have worked with both Palm Beach County and DOT. And we just want to make sure that we're committing to do something that we can live with. But we'll have to go back to them after we've sat down with staff and figured out what we can fit to get their ultimate sign-off. So we would ask that it be subject to DOT and Palm Beach County approval as well. And then lastly, I just want to remind, because we didn't focus much in our presentation on it, this originally had been a planned commercial development that was proposing 120,000 square feet of commercial, which is a huge amount of retail development. Because the gas station was built. Because the gas station was built, which was part of the PCD, this PCD vested as well as that square footage. We are not increasing our square footage, um, or pardon me, the impacts of the traffic. And when you compare what we are leaving on the table with the commercial that had been approved, we are actually improving conditions out there by coming in with something that is less intense. So, you know, while we all can talk about traffic being a real problem in South Florida, and it is, uh, we're talking about taking something that was heavily intense in the way of commercial, which means that generally people are coming and going at the same time. And they're coming from outside this site to create a mixed use, which allows for some of the people here to actually walk over to the Aldis or to the retail and not get in their cars. And that's, you know, that's why when the SMU was created, the hope was that you were introducing and integrating uses so that it would be less likely that all the trips that are on the property are going to be going off the property for basic needs. That's the goal. And this is closer to achieving that goal than what had previously been approved. Um, so lastly, this meets the code. We have worked very, very hard with your staff to give you something that meets all of the requirements of the code. And this does. We're very proud that we could do it in a way that we exceeded open space. We preserved a lot of what we could. We created larger buffers than our normal. We created building types that were more compatible with our immediate neighbors. We added access, we expanded turning movements in order to accommodate waste, service vehicles and emergency vehicles. Um, and we introduced amenities that you don't always find the volume of amenities here. So we, we hope um, that you will approve us, not for any other reason than it meets the code. And we're willing to go beyond that in many ways, including adding uh, additional retail on the frontage. So uh, I will stop and turn it back over to the commission. And thank you very much for allowing us the time to present to you this evening.
Thank you.
All right.
Um, Mr. Rattigan, I see that you came up to the podium. Did you have any additional comments on that?
Just one additional comment that staff would like, um, the commission's direction. Uh, with the applicant did propose a change to the conditions of approval regarding the required sidewalk along Canute Road. Um, that sidewalk is required along our, our roads and part of our engineering standards. Staff does, um, would like to keep that condition as is. I would just need to know if you would like uh, for that commission to be modified, to please let us know. And also note that um, since it is required, it would also require an approved engineering waiver uh, from our city engineer.
For my own clarification, Mr. Rattigan, could you just repeat the condition? I just want to make sure that's clear for myself and all members.
Yes, the requirement is to include a pedestrian sidewalk along Canute Road, um, the entire length of the proposed site. There already is an existing connection from uh, Boynton Beach Boulevard along the gas station. And the requirement is to continue that sidewalk, the length of the road. The applicant is requesting that that uh, be modified to um, just include a connection to the existing sidewalk, which would remove the sidewalk along the Canute Road.
All right, thank you. At this time, I want to move on to final questions and comments by members of the commission because I do need to get direction from all of you and for staff as well. I know we've had a good number of questions asked today. Is this something that you are comfortable moving forward this evening? Is this something you're comfortable tabling so we can make some final adjustments? But I need to hear that from my colleagues. Doesn't matter which we begin, Commissioner, hey, would, did you have any final comments? Where are you on this item this evening?
I would certainly like to uh, to uh, take a look at the sidewalk uh, issue a little bit more. Uh, other than that, uh, they have Metcode, Metal Code, uh, PD has approved, approved them. Uh, so that's the only outstanding item for me at this time is the, taking a look at the sidewalk. That uh, was mentioned by, by staff.
Commissioner, so just so I'm clear, do you mean to say that you are supporting staff's condition of approval?
I am supporting staff condition.
All right, excellent. Um, Vice Mayor Cruz.
Um, I know the applicant has been working hard with staff and has given us a lot of conditions that we've asked for and definitely grateful for that. Um, I would really have to ask all of you. I'm not, I don't have a strong position on that. I do happen to um, like to listen to staff and see what you think is best. Um, I do think that time is of the essence here and I do think that we should look into approving this today as we know it meets code. Um, they've been working with staff for a long time to get this approved. And they've been uh, more than willing to help us out with the uh, retail space continuation. So that's something that we might want to keep in mind.
And Vice Mayor, where did you stand on the conditions uh, that was just discussed? There was
I feel more comfortable, generally speaking, with taking staff's advice.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anything else? All right, Commissioner Turkin.
Oh, oof, huh, I, I, I think, I'd like to table this. I'd, I'd like to look into this a little bit more with staff.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Kelly?
Um, I, this is, and I really, um, this is our first time really hearing about this project. And so, um, Bonnie, I, um, I know that you're, um, you guys have worked, you've worked very hard on this project. Um, and, and I, I don't want to feel like we, you know, in particular me attacking you as far as traffic goes and things like that. This is our first time really seeing this and talking this through, um, the most of us. So, um, I just wanted to, to say, you know, I understand and appreciate the time and effort that you've put into this project. And so I don't want that to go, um, you know, I don't want that to get lost in it all. Um, my concerns with traffic will always be my concerns with traffic in um, the city. I, we are the ones who get the phone calls and the emails when traffic, when there are problems. So I have to talk about them. So, um, I, I would defer to staff as far as the sidewalk um, goes. I think that they're the ones who, um, you know, have those recommendations. Um, but otherwise, um, I agree that I think it's um, something that we need to kind of move forward on in a, in a responsible way in that looking into um, the commercial aspects and improving those. But I don't, um, I don't think we um, need to delay it um, any further. But we, we just need to be responsible about moving forward. That's my.
Okay, so from what I heard, there is consensus on supporting the staff recommendation for that condition, i.e. a sidewalk path. Um, and the vast majority of us appears to want to move forward this evening and make a decision. Um, that's what I'm hearing. And uh, all right, so with that, um, I'm going to have, open the floor to a motion.
Yep.
And uh, please include the uh, the condition. Um, I see there's a hand, uh, go ahead, Ms. Rattigan.
I would just ask that uh, in your motion, you do add a condition of approval requiring additional retail space along Boynton Beach Boulevard.
That's right.
To the maximum extent possible based on the approval of staff.
Okay. Who would like to make that motion?
Motion to approve based on the, geez, that was all, based on staff recommendation of retail space to its max on Boynton Beach Boulevard. Um, and with the changes that obviously were made today. Yep, motion to approve.
Second.
Was that clear for staff?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
All right, we have a mo-, um, counsel.
I'm just want to confirm that's the single motion for both parts of the application, correct? The master plan and the site plan? Cause remember it was two parts, you're just doing it in a single motion. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you to staff and thank you to the applicants.
Thank you.
We're moving on to item eight B. It reads proposed resolution number R22-088. Uh, this is an item we have, I've been discussing for quite some time, but officially now it is on the agenda. Is there anybody from the CRA staff that is present that's able to speak on this item? Do we have perhaps Tim online?
Mayor Tweeshaw, the CRA director is available online.
All right, Tweed, if you could unmute yourself and just give us a quick, uh, quick overview.
Well, you just need to hit the microphone button.
All right, um, in the absence of Tweed, I'm just going to ask our counsel, uh, just give us a quick overview of this item so we can proceed forward.
I'm sorry, Mike Sorillo, City Attorney. This is here this evening because the sale price is less than the appraised value of the property. And so under uh, chapter 163, that requires the, the, the city's governing body, you all, to approve the sale that's the CRA is considering in its capacity. And so this is a public hearing uh, for anybody to give comments to you, uh, for you to consider approving uh, and authorizing this sale. And I believe there is a typo. Um, the purchase price is a hundred dollars in the contract. I think the general report says 10, it should, it was, it was a hundred dollars.
All right, thank you, counsel. Um, I'm going to move on to any questions or comments from members of the commission. Seeing none, I'm going to move on to public comments on this item. If you would like to speak on item eight B, specifically an item eight B, please approach the podium now. All right, I see one individual and then after the in-person will proceed online.
Hi, Ernest McGauley, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Boynton Beach, Unit 407. So, uh, can, can I ask the uh, City Attorney, just as a quick clarification again, on the essence of what you're going to vote on?
This is not a Q and A, sir.
It's a what?
This is not a Q and A.
Not a Q and A?
This is for public comments so we can hear your concerns.
About?
Item eight B and only item eight B. And sir, your clock is ticking, so please proceed if you have any comments specifically about this item.
I'm not worried, but you can't have the uh, you know, I attend meetings all over the country and whenever I ask the City Attorney
He literally just explained it to us.
What?
He literally just explained this item.
Well, I, I'm asking for a further clarification. No? You could do it on my time. No? No. Okay, well, then I'll just make my usual comment that again, every time I see one of these things get proposed here and I cross-reference with the political contributions, it's frightening how a group like yourself would vote anything other than always yes for people that excessively contribute to you, that's a public record. So it, it doesn't even make sense why these meetings take place. So I would say vote no, but no matter what happens, you always vote yes. But the records are clear. The donations are clear. All the engineers, all the planners, all the realtors make all the donations. Is that right, Mrs. Cruz?
Thank you. Any other in-person public speakers, final call? Seeing none, we're going to move on to online speakers. Money, are there, is there anybody online with their hands raised?
Uh, we have one, Michael Shremko. I'm sorry, I can't pronounce the last name.
That's okay.
Michael, when you're
How are you? Uh, yeah, I was just wondering if we could request that, um, I was looking at the plans for that property and up against that property, um, Quail Ridge has a, an auto bond society cooperatives management thing because there's a bunch of birds of prey that nest on the side adjacent to that property. If maybe the developer could do something like that.
Mr. Shremko, one second, I'm going to pause your time. Um, we're on item eight B. Uh, we fortunately passed that other item already.
Okay, all right, no problem. Sorry about that.
Thank you, but if you did have comments, feel free to email our city clerk. We'll have that in the record, of course.
Okay, you got it. Thank you.
All right, uh, Money, just final check, was there anybody else online?
No, sir. Nope, that was the last one.
All right, public comments are now closed on this item. Uh, again, we're back to the commission. If there's nothing else, we have a motion to approve resolution R22-088. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, all those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We are now moving on to new business. We have, we have no item under City Manager's report and uh, new business, this is a virtual meetings. This is per my request. As many of you know, uh, we transferred to add uh, virtual meetings as an option because of pandemic that has come and gone. And so I want to bring it forth to the rest of you, uh, to discuss whether or not this is something you want to continue. I know that, uh, you know, today wasn't so bad, but in several meetings, we've had lots of technical issues, people not being able to speak when they want to speak, uh, background noises, people getting cut off. So, you know, I know, I question whether or not we need to continue this or continue this with this system. Now, for example, um, I've seen other cities like the West Palm, who just uses YouTube Live or uh, Zoom broadcasts in Lake Worth. Uh, so this is just something I want to throw out there and see where you guys stand on this issue. I know we're just having some issues, difficulties. And I think it might be time to retire the system. Um, I saw a hand, Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, I, um, I, I think that the part of the system that works is that the public is able to watch the meetings as they happen. Um, I think that has, it has definitely made participation in our meetings um, greatly improved. And for the most part, we enjoy the public participating in the meetings. Um, and I think that, um, but I agree that technically speaking, we're having issues. And I feel like we're then doing a disservice to the residents who, um, who maybe rush home um, from work and they get online and then there's a, and they, they're there to speak on a valid issue and want their voice to be heard. And then there's a technical issue and their voice is not heard. And so I, I feel like that, maybe that portion of it, we leave it for almost, for email. Maybe make it uh, known that they can email in their comments.
To the city clerk?
To the city clerk so that it's on the record and it's for review and it's part of the, of the public record. But that we don't shut down the viewing availability for the residents. I think that that's an important um, piece of it.
And, and to be clear, Commissioner, when they email to the clerk, for example, is it your intention, uh, that it's read into the record during the meeting, just like any other public comment? Is that what you were leaning towards or you leaned towards something else?
No, just some, just so that it's on the, on part of that meeting. Um, so that when we go back and read the, the minutes to approve them, any additional public comments are there.
Included.
Or they're included.
Okay. Um, any other thoughts from my colleagues on that? Commissioner Turkin?
Yeah, um, I, I, I agree. I think we, something's needed to change. Uh, I, I think every, every meeting we've had a technical difficulty.
Somehow.
And yeah, somehow, some way, uh, I've, you, you Zoom in the private sector, it's great. Google Meets is great, Teams is great. Um, so I, and I think it's probably more cost efficient. I don't know what the fiscal impact of this program is here, but I, I, I do want to continue the ability for the public to chime in and, and give comments. And I, I did like the creativity we had with our assistant manager, city manager, with having those emailed in if, if that defaults, but again, we don't want to get to that point. So I, I do want to look into Google, you know, Google Meets, Teams, Microsoft Teams, Zoom and see how we can continue the participation because I think that's Because I think that's important, right? I think awareness is important and making that more accessible and convenient for constituents should be our priority.
Another factor to consider, Commissioner, and to all my colleagues here, is accountability. You know, I, I can tell you, I've spoken to a good number of people, that there are people online who are pretending to be someone else. I mean, this is true of anything online. And so we need to figure out how to incorporate that into the system. I'm not sure yet, but it's definitely something that's in my mind. Commissioner Hay?
Well, I guess where I'm at this stage is that I'm not quite ready to shut it down. I feel with the stats being what they are, there's still a challenge out there with this, this whole wearing masks and all this kind of stuff. Some businesses still required, some banks still required. And I don't want to shut that down yet as far as our meeting is concerned. I think we get participation from the, the audience that we would not normally get. I would like to see it go not forever, but for a little bit longer. And I, I just don't feel comfortable with the numbers right now. And I, I think we get good participation. It may be something that we could work out. I, our technical problems, I'm, I'm not sure what they are. I would agree that we are having some challenges in that area, but not to the point of shutting it down. Because I think to some degree, maybe not in commission meeting, but it's going to be a new norm. You know, I, I know we want to go back to norm, but what, what is norm now? How do you define that with what, what COVID has, has taught us? And so there, there may be some modification of what we're doing now that, that can make it better, but still have a, an option for the people to chime in. I, I don't, I think it's a bit premature at this stage to just shut it down. And I just feel we need to work with it a little bit more. And I mean, it may end up that we do what we're saying here now, but I don't think it's the time for it right now.
Commissioner, would you be open to at least looking at different platforms, like different systems?
Absolutely.
That might be a little bit better? Because, you know, my concern here, we're not trying to minimize public comment. The goal here is to have a system that works without so many technical difficulties, which inadvertently reduces public comment because people can't speak when they really want to speak and all of that.
That I would agree with. If we can get a better system, that's better than what we have with less challenges, I'll be all for it.
Okay, and so we're open to looking at different platforms and we're open to looking at different ways of chiming in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, just to clarify, I don't, I would not support eliminating this until we have an alternative in place. I, I think that's the consensus that you're getting, Commissioner Hay, correct?
Right.
I, I would agree with that. I, I don't want to eliminate it and then look for an alternative.
Right.
We need to continue that input while we find that alternative.
Exactly.
And, and maybe I missed, I misheard you, Mayor. But I just, that's where I stand.
No, no, I think we're on this, I haven't, I think we're on the same page. I have not heard from Vice Mayor Cruz yet. But on that note, one second. On that note, Commissioner, I just want to say, how quickly we transition over really just depends on staff. Because they're the ones who's going to figure out what the options are, what's working, what's not. And they're going to test it. It might be as early as next meeting. It might be as early as two meetings from now. So it depends on them. But Vice Mayor Cruz?
Same, I think it's worth looking at different options and something that's more reliable, where people can actually make public comment and be heard. So I agree with everyone else.
And I think it's important too that we promote this transition when we get there and inform the public about this transition.
Absolutely.
And, and we need to make it more accessible on the city website, I think. So can we look into how to get through these links quicker? Yeah, like front page, like, hey, click here to join. You know, yeah, I know we can do it.
Right. I'm not a big fan of WebEx, but you know, that's just me. And I've used other platforms that are more convenient, but that's something that they're going to look into and test. All right, so I believe there's consensus. I hope that was clear enough direction for staff to explore other platforms and other means of chiming in, public participation online. So it's more reliable. And whenever that's available, you'll inform us. You'll update the public, you'll include the notices. And of course, you're going to test everything out. All right, if there's nothing else on this item, we're going to proceed to legal. This is proposed ordinance number 22-016. Counsel, I'm turning to you to introduce the item.
Mayor, members of the city commission, I read the ordinance title. An ordinance to the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending chapter 18, article four, pensions for firefighters, amending section 18-180.2 of the city code, governing firefighter pension COLA, amending section 18-194 regarding the firefighter drop program, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for severability, providing for repeal and providing for effective date. This is a public hearing. This is second reading of the ordinance. You passed it on first reading last time. This is implementing changes to the pension, which is consistent with the collective bargaining agreement, which was earlier passed by this commission as well.
All right, thank you, counsel, because this is second reading. It is a hearing. We'll hear from the public as well. Does, do any members of the commission here have any additional questions that they didn't ask before?
Nope.
Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed directly into public comments. First, those in person, then followed by those online. If you are in the audience and would like to speak on this item, please approach the podium now. Again, this is specifically an item 12A.
Yeah, hi, Ernest Mangoli, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Unit 407, Boynton Beach. So you're going to vote on the communication system and, and what you just spoke about, correct? Correct. I, I would like to say, me personally, that I, I speak to a lot of people, a lot now in Boynton Beach, who are very frustrated with the, the meetings, very frustrated with often calling in and not being able to unmute. Also very frustrated with the inequitable way that certain people can talk for 10 extra minutes and other people at the stroke of three minutes are, are cut off or whatever. So I, I, I think that, that when a city is in, hopefully, in transition like this one is, going from very problematic over a few decades, hopefully to more open, transparent, a lot less internal crime, corruption, nepotism, that somehow the public doesn't feel fearful when they come in and say what's on their mind. I know physically coming in here, most people I talk to don't want to come in, are afraid to come in. And, and they just feel like threatened coming here, like the whole atmosphere. It doesn't matter what you speak about, the police or the fire or the city or the commissioners or the, the city attorney or the manager or anything you speak about, the boards, the committees, the authorities. It's, it's, it's not an uphill battle. It's just like a suppression, like a blocking, a closeout. And then when you come to meetings, you hear, you say, well, we want to get the emails and we want to get this and we want everybody to communicate when in fact, everyone sitting up here knows that you don't answer emails, you don't answer voicemails, you don't answer phone calls. Especially the problem I see is the worst problem is that when someone wants to critique or make factual statements about someone in the city that works for the city and you don't like it, the first thing, the defense that you come up with is you're getting personal. There's nothing personal about a city person who takes an oath about a civil servant, about a police officer, about a fireman. Before you are, it's personal. After you are, it's personal. When you're on the job, someone can come in and make statements and you're not allowed to say, well, if you make any personal comments, there's no such thing as personal. So I think anything you can do to be more reliable is better.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Money. Is there anybody online to speak on 12A, item 12A?
No, sir, we have no hands raised.
All right, that concludes public comments.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. This is proposed ordinance number 22-016.